More than likely next month, I mean the next week.
Next meeting, okay.
Wayne will have a letter coming tomorrow.
I think there was just an email that came from Wayne.
A little while ago.
About eight minutes ago.
Tomorrow. He will give the report tomorrow.
Attached as a memo, which we're hoping for disclosure.
Well, he must have just sent it.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, but they're not here.
My last email, no, all right.
Okay, so it sounds like we're on, yeah.
We'll go for the next meeting, okay.
Okay, well, Angel Brook will entertain again.
Welcome back.
Welcome back, yes. I don't know what we're discussing. Okay, come on up to the table.
Feel free to pull some chairs up, apologize for that.
It's not like we ever get a lot of visitors, so.
Okay, so the first thing is, I wanted to make sure that you got the email that I sent.
Yep, with the minutes?
The other day. Well.
I got the minutes one.
Yeah, and it was my minutes were.
Monday, March 21st.
You do have it, that's it.
Yep.
Where's the date on this? No, Monday, March 21st.
Twenty first, we're doing that.
But this is all one thing?
Yes.
So, what I was looking for in the minutes, and I said, oh, I'm sure it just sort of agrees pretty much with the ones that Ben sent to us as a draft in that Mike Staley comment. So anyway, then.
He seen your minutes, or he hasn't seen the minutes?
Who?
Staley.
No.
Not more.
No, well, I figured they were almost the same as yours.
Yeah.
It was just someone else was taking the notes.
Yeah.
And so I just, I give it back to you, so.
Yeah, and I was wondering if you had any other insights that we didn't catch because it was, you know, we just went ahead with.
So, the problem that we had is that Mike Staley's already responded to your minutes, right?
Yeah, well, sort of.
And what he's, yeah, well, he did, and he said, as part of that, that he's already cleaned out.
I know, he said, it's on that.
And he cleaned off, I forget whether he was, a sediment and debris. So he says it cleans out the sediment, but the stakes that were put in.
Were new, huh?
Were brand new, and someone said, well, they all put those in there, but you can't put them in and have them.
Count them still.
Count for anything if they're buried in stealth and they're not painted, because they're all.
Or they're not graded. I mean, like, they should be somewhere affiliated with the, when they do the grading of the whole site.
That's right, and in fact, they're, they're, the ONM plan, the ONM plan that was prepared by, by Staley's engineer.
Yeah.
Okay, and I found another copy that was filed today, I was over here.
Okay.
People heard, people heard. Of the December 8th, 2004.
What was the heading?
Well, Operation Maintenance Plan, Angel Brook, Wes Boilson. And so I guess another question relating to this is that we had asked for.
Well, actually, you had asked for one on letterhead.
He didn't send it.
He did not?
He did.
Oh, he did, okay.
Well, he did send it.
Sent to Congress, was in the mail today.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so you just got it, yeah?
Yes.
Uh, okay.
And he never sent an electronic copy?
I didn't see electronic copy yet. I did paper copy, I got you, it's just on computer, on the letterhead, it's on the letterhead, so. It's the same thing as what you've been bringing in there.
Can we make copies?
Can you make?
What then?
I agree.
We'll just give them, one of them, just.
Okay, so, well, but, we can get that one, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna move, so. But part of his, you know, the.
We've just started.
The ONM plan.
I'm sure of this story.
Yes, the ONM plan they had before, the one they still have, called for this market, and it has to be paid, so the thing.
Right.
In fact, it's also in a bogus, even if he had cleaned them out before.
Yeah.
We don't, and nobody that's lived there for the past eight to 10 years ever saw anybody in those, those forbes.
No, no, I mean, this is the, this is the whole, this is the story, he's talking about the state. I get it, yep.
I mean, it's like, you know, we gotta be delicate, because we don't want to call him liar, or whatever, we gotta say it nicely, but those stakes are meaningless if you put them in.
Well, and.
After the test, even if it was not 10 years, maybe it was only five years.
Or whatever, it's not at the right place.
It's not the right place, and they're not properly locked, so therefore, unless you guys are willing to accept what's there now as being ground zero, you know, I mean, that's, that's zero grade, that's the baseline, and we know, we don't want to do that, we don't, we certainly don't want to do that, because they're.
Thank you.
So.
I mean, some of them were okay, but some. Yeah, there were a few, I didn't have the stuff to sample it, to find out how deep it was.
That's right.
But that's what we need to do, is send someone out there with, actually, you go out, it's.
We could use rocks to log it.
Well, it's easy, it's a rock bottom, so all you have to do is.
Go and dig it out.
Get a hole, and just dig with a hole until you hit rocks.
Are the forbes supposed to be rocks?
Yeah.
You just dig down till you hit a rock, and then that's how much sediment has to remove.
When you're maintaining a forbes, you're not vacuuming and cleaning like your yard or house. You're just going down to the rocks, you're getting the big volume of material, and you're taking it out. That's why they're sized to be twice as big as what's needed, so when they get half full, then that's when it gets cleaned.
And we see, we are assuming that the base of the forbes was seen, and you're saying it's rock.
The detail I thought you had was a rock forbes.
That brings up the issue, we'll have somebody look at them, that, before they'll even give us an idea of what it would cost to fix them, we need a copy of the original plans.
That's coming. I talked to him.
It hasn't.
It hasn't arrived yet, I got half of it, 14 megabyte file today, from.
Wait, we don't have one.
From, from.
What's that? We have it in our files somewhere.
From your designer?
Yes, yeah, the designer.
With Herdys.
Herdys Design, yep.
Okay, I saw the file that you sent today also.
Okay.
Because we said.
Well, you did open it.
We sent it to Phil, I was like, open.
Okay.
And it has none of that information that we're looking for.
Yeah, it's always the last page is where the details are.
Oh, and it just didn't come through.
And that's why I haven't, well, it's not, 14 megabyte isn't the whole file, it's only half.
Doesn't he have to, because you guys don't know where you're putting that, doesn't, isn't he obligated to give you paper copies for those things?
He has, we have a paper copy in our files somewhere.
I mean, originally, we had one.
Well.
And we haven't looked, have we?
So in order for us, in order for us to find out, if it's supposed to be, that's an interesting, it has a rock bottom.
Yeah, I think. Well, I think you come over and you can see it.
I.
Maybe.
A couple, I think you could. The one on the driveway, practically, the trees are driving, I mean, and your son was running through, I mean, you could see it.
Well, there's a rock berm, I'm not sure if it's rock all the way under.
I think.
And if it is, if it's not, it depends on what the design was.
Like.
Over the last five years, if it was designed the way typically they're done, it's a rock line to maintain it. Because it's easier, because when you're doing maintenance, you dig down till you hit the rock, it makes it easy. If it's not, then how do you know when to stop?
Exactly.
So who would we get to do that, to determine what status they are in?
What's that?
I think that's the.
That's us, we're gonna, we, we'll take care of that, we. This process, you guys are getting involved in something that you don't really need to, but you are moving it forward faster than what would normally happen.
You're pushing it through.
Right.
So the only, the only reason we're getting involved is, we don't want to end up having to pay big dollars to get it to where it should have been if the bond is ever released.
Right.
And we don't, we don't know what it's gonna cost.
Right, well, I thought Jeff Taylor was coming together with an estimate.
He says, I gotta see the funds.
So, which is fine, that makes sense, so, again, we don't have anything here, he's not gonna be doing the work for another couple weeks.
And then, I guess then you have a problem of who pays him to do the work.
So here's my question, right, here's my question, the fact that Mr. Staley has said in his email that. I just let him back. As response to your, your minutes.
Yeah.
That, that, all of the forbes, except for a couple of them, had been cleaned out several years ago, and we know the fact that they haven't. So, and the fact that there's no stakes that were put into market, then, then, are you gonna hold him to?
We're gonna hold him to what he designed, I mean, we're just trying to pull information together to get the full story. We have heard your side where it's, we want everything done as best as you can get it. His side is, I don't want to do anything more than I have to, which is understandable. We're at the point where, because it's taken so long, some of the stuff that normally he would not have to do, he's having to do, and some of the things that you see as needing to be done should have been done already in the past under the Home Loans Association. So there's gonna be middle ground somewhere, and that's why it's going back and forth, and we're trying to figure that out. We don't have to figure it out yet.
Because he agreed to a couple of things, he agreed to a couple of plans, and we agreed to fix them, to adding the, the.
The dam.
Yeah, the dam, yeah, the rock dam.
Oh, the check dam, yep.
Check dam, there you go. In the forbes.
No, you're good. There we go.
In the forbes behind, behind Everly.
He knows the one that's.
Oh, yes, the one that needs to be built, yes.
The one that needs to be built.
Yeah?
And he has, he has addressed that, but he also has to clean it out, and the other ones too.
Well, that'll be easy when he's building it, that just all happens at once, but, yeah, he does.
Okay, so, so, one of the.
That means he's gotta get some equipment, I mean, he's gonna be doing some work.
He's gonna have a small machine in there, probably, yeah.
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 Okay, and, and, and you've, you've asked, and you're still waiting for the drawings?
Yes.
Okay, so, so, and we're gonna, we're gonna ask him for a paper copy, you may not even be able to file. But we figured, if, in order for us to go forward and maintain them, you know, and inspect them.
Yeah.
Then we have to have these details, what the base is, and hopefully it's rocks.
And, I mean, his reply may be, and I'm just anticipating, if he has the electronic file, take it down to.
Staples.
Whatever, well, not staples, they're too expensive, go to Acme Blueprint and have them plot it out. Not for bad advertising for staples, but.
Who's, who's Acme?
Acme Blueprint on Grove Street, they do a lot of the engineering plans and drawings.
They all know what works.
Yep.
What is it?
I know where it is.
I'm an E-4, I'm in Lucky's.
Okay, good, so it's.
Yes.
Yes, Lucky's designer.
Say it, you know.
On your way to Lucky's.
Acme, what?
Acme.
Acme Blueprint, I know where it is, my daughter worked there.
Okay, it's good to have someone that grew up on.
Yeah, it's nice.
Go to Lucky's, Lucky's is a nice place, Lucky's.
It's a great place.
I don't even know what that is.
You gotta take them out.
It's a little restaurant.
Oh, okay.
Sub, subterranean.
I mean, it's.
Okay. Okay, Bob, help me out, what else are we, are we looking for here?
We want the plans, we want them signed, sealed, and delivered from the developer and the.
And we got the, as, ONM plan, right?
Yeah.
I saw that in your mail.
There's two amendments, there's the original design, and then two amendments to it, we haven't been able to get those yet, all right? You say maybe they came in today.
Two amendments, one amendment.
I didn't open the file, if you open the file.
Well, I opened the drawing file, it just, it just has site drawings, and it doesn't have the detail that we're looking for.
Right, but does it say when?
But there's another one coming.
But there should be revision numbers and names, dates.
There should be two revisions, then.
Just check to see which one you get, you have.
Oh, yeah, well, I know there's gonna be, there's gonna be two sets, one that we, one that we have that I've already looked at, and then there's gonna, then there's another one that's coming, that, you know.
The other, the second half of that set.
Because I think he sent it to you, Phil, and, I don't know, who else?
I think it was Phil and myself, it didn't go to the board.
And when, and when Phil left home, he hadn't, he didn't see it.
I didn't forward it to you, but, I can't, if you want, 14 megabyte attached.
Yes, and it's a little bit of a bit of spam, a little bit of.
Put it on a thumb drive, yeah.
Gmail.
Yeah, I know.
Gmail will be all right.
You can do that, I, I'm not that technical yet, I'm working on it.
Put it on a thumb drive.
Just go to Acme Blueprint and get the paper copies for all of us.
That's it. As long as, we have time to negotiate, and we're getting all the research.
Well, none of that is even, I don't think there's been a formal request for the.
Yeah, he requested it, I think, a year ago. He requested it a year ago, we're gonna do the inspection, we didn't get the.
Yeah, okay, so he's not running down his procedure, I mean, there's a, there's a process.
Yes, but he's, he's gone down much of the process, we were at the point where VHB had to inspect it last fall, but they were too busy doing a lot of construction inspections, remember? And so it's gone to now, they've got it inspected as of last December, January, and then there's things that still need to be done, so this is where we're just, we're at here, we're not, we're not on our agenda.
Prepare an estimate?
No, he, yes, we have to just confirm from VHB, but I think VHB already confirmed that $10,000 would be ample for what is outstanding based on what they know, but we're finding more information, so we'll then give that to VHB and Wayne, and then have them say, okay, is, whatever we're gonna hold enough to do, because I think what we're trying to get him to do, he will already have done when he wants to get the release of the covenant, so that we release it down to whatever the $10,000 is, and hopefully he will already have done all the stuff that.
Right, because there were some other things.
Sacked up on that.
There were some other things that he agreed to, that he agreed to do, in accordance with the VHB comments from a couple of months ago.
Yes.
Okay, and it was, I remember there was one of them that was a drain behind number 87 or something, and it was all.
Scarring, you know.
It was scarring, and they were gonna fill it, they were gonna put some cloth down, and some stone and stuff.
Yes.
I remember that was one, there's the road.
Is that done yet?
Uh, no, no, not there.
Keep an eye on that one.
Well, are you kidding me?
We got a responsibility, people are gonna buy from, half the week passed away.
That's right, but we are, we are, there you go, right, we're our retirement community, and you can't do anything out there without someone seeing, someone's watching every place, you know?
Which is good, which is good.
No, it does, you know, I mean, I always say it's funny because the living spaces are in the back, and the front is, is, you know, like, the garage, and the spare bedroom and stuff, but I dare people, you know, you don't get, anything by anybody in that village, I mean, it's, which is good, because it's like a neighborhood watch, you know?
Yeah, oh, it's, yeah, secure.
It's not, you know, hey, you know, just I saw somebody going into your house, and, you know, they opened your garage door, you know.
And they took everything out?
Yeah, and they took some stuff out of there, actually, we've seen that.
Yeah, you gotta watch all those guys coming over from the Washington Country Club.
That's true, well, and they would be like someone.
The Whistler Country Club.
The Whistler Country Club, all those people, they're crazy.
Yeah, based on this email, it looks like it will be done by end of April.
But what he does, I think.
But it sounds good, I hope he does everything by the end of April, that's.
So, if it is, you know, we can hold on until then too, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're holding on till things are done, I mean, it's, we're not trying to make any deals with anybody, we're trying to make sure that everything gets done the way it needs to get done.
What I was, what I was gonna like to comment about is if, who decides how, how the groundskeeper or the maintenance guy gets paid, I mean, who looks at what he does and gets paid?
Well.
That's your committee?
Trustees.
Well, well, if, for like, for clearing the forbes, you know?
Yeah, if he does the forbes, but then he puts it on your tab instead of Staley's tab.
We don't pay.
Oh.
Well, these guys, you don't think these guys are watching that?
Well, what I was, what I was gonna say is.
Every bit.
That, that's a very accurate expense, then, is how much it costs.
Which is, which is why we want to get you guys to hold Staley to, to what he's supposed to be doing, you know, so. So that we don't get a bill for it, you know.
But if the work gets done, and it happens to get charged, and you see that bill, and you say, all right, they did all the work, and here's the bill, that's exactly how much it costs.
We have a guy.
We have a guy that's like a pit bull with lips.
We have a guy that's not here tonight, he is, he's a pit.
I'm not, I'm not saying whether or not you should pay it, I'm just saying, that, as, as, as far as a quotation, this, yeah, good, good luck. You're getting $4 towards it, but I mean, that, that, that statement would be like, they did all the work, and here, this is how much it did cost, you know, or something like that.
If Mike agrees, he will pay for it, right?
Well, I'm, I'm not really talking about who.
Just so they can work for it.
I'm just saying how much it'll cost.
So in the future, they'll have an estimate of what it's cost.
Right, how much it's worth to do, and you can do this in the future.
They'll do a budget and plan for that in the future, I think that's where you're going, right?
Yeah, and if he ends up saying, no, this is, it'd cost more than $10,000 or whatever, you say, no, it didn't, here, he did the work, and it cost him four days or.
Yeah, but. The guy came in this past Saturday, he said he's done work for the town, that's why he didn't, couldn't come in, or, he was gonna come in on Wednesday or Thursday, and he couldn't come in because he was, there was a, a water main break someplace in town here, or.
Right, the water was black, yes.
Yeah, yeah, they, so, really, so.
On the other side of town.
So he didn't come, was that like Thursday or Friday he was supposed to come?
He was Saturday, it was four.
And he came Saturday, and it was raining cold, but anyway, and he's asked, he's asked for, for the drawings, you know, because he knows what the, knows what the base is. Well, if we don't get the drawings in the time they're made, because we want a price from him, we're gonna say, well, assume it's, you know, you have to dig, you have to dig eight inches, I don't, you know, what else you tell him, you gotta dig it.
Estimate of volume.
I mean, I mean, you gotta, you gotta guess at something.
I mean, I would say.
Now.
I'd give a best one, say that's what the bottom should look like in all of them.
Right.
So it's not good, it's not good, it's not good.
Right, so, Bob and I walked with him, and he told us that, you know, their, their ballpark estimate was like, we said, 1,500, I said, can you give us just a rough idea, he said, $1,500 apiece.
A piece?
Per, per forbes. To get it, to get it, he said, but that's because you gotta get equipment in there to dig it out, and then you gotta return the, the ground that you screwed up, getting, getting your thing in there, we gotta return that too, because that's, otherwise, that's more expense to you, so that's, that's on our nickel too. So he said $1,500, now again, that was just off the cuff, so we wanna get something in writing, now, what, what are you thinking? You don't look like you believe that, do you think that's too high, too low?
I don't know.
Well, the assessment is, and we don't.
You owe me a joint.
That's right, I get my son out there working out.
Exactly, well, we could use him, we could use him, yeah.
Just play in the site.
Child, child labor, how old is he?
He's not old enough.
So, well, anyway.
Well, Hillside had a problem, therefore, their detention bonds, big time.
Oh, they had a serious, but they had reasons for that, they didn't maintain things during construction, and the bottom got silted in, and.
Well, that's exactly where we are.
The infiltration area, not the forbes.
Okay, oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
Because those forbes look nice and dry, I mean, the infiltration area looked nice and dry.
They work, they work.
Yeah, it wasn't that way on the other.
You're all right, couldn't be.
In the summertime, which is mostly when you can tell when things are good, and we had someone look at them a couple of years ago, and it said, they appear to be working as designed.
Yes, that's, that's.
Or as, as detention ponds were designed, so, okay, I just wanna make sure that we have it.
Yeah, we'll be on the agenda for when, do we wanna put?
A perpetual meaning?
Well, no, why don't we just Angel Brook Bond Reduction? We'll put that on the agenda when we're gonna talk about a bond reduction, if that's your big concern. Because I think we all know where we stand now and I think it's all, it's mostly negotiation between you and he. As long as it gets done, we want it to get done.
Well, VHB's involved though too.
VHB's gonna do a final approval, but.
Well, then they sort of have to say, pass some judgment on whether they think these things are.
And when they do that, when they come through to do the final inspection, they'll notify the trustees. So one or two, whatever number can.
We can do it just like we did last, okay.
Also, we may have to come back to you with a negotiation item that we may say, hey, we'll back off on this. So we may have to come back to you and say, can we do that? And, you know.
What do you mean?
Has to be completed. There may be items in there that are, items that are compulsory on the.
On the list. Uh, no, on our list, those are the ones that are typically required. Those are the ones that are typically required.
And the only question is who's responsible?
Well, no. Cleaning the basins, we looked at the basins and we found out that there are some that have sediment in them. I don't know which ones, I think you referred to some that were construction related, others that were just maintenance related still, is that's what.
Well, you can't look.
I don't know, but that's what Heritage is saying.
Right.
So what we looked at, and I think I replied in an email somewhere, that when you dig a, dig in the ground, you can't tell whether it's construction sand or street sanding sand that's washed in there. So I don't know that I'd be able to walk out there and say, oh, this looks like from the back of unit number 26 that washed in during construction or this is from when they were sanding the road. I don't know the difference between sand.
But Heritage works for Keystone. Heritage is employed by Keystone, so, so.
That's where it's a little.
It gets a little money, exactly.
And so, but, so what we're looking for is some agreement that you guys say, oh, yeah, it does make sense that we think these other basins were maintained and cleaned up after construction. The construction that's occurred now has been going on and the only areas that have been impacted for the last two years are these other three basins. I don't know that. That's why we're asking you guys to come up with something that's reasonable.
If there has been any fixing of the four bays after construction, what we would want to see is the log that showed it happened.
He's not required to have a log for that. The log starts with the O and M, one of the property ownership gets transferred to somebody else.
So they, they're like an O and M procedure for us to follow?
Yes.
And they don't have to follow it to have it ready for us when they turn it over to us?
Well, that's, but that's the thing, is it's, the site has to be made ready to be turned over to you. And that's usually what happens after a year, a couple of years. They go up through the construction, he cleans the catch basins, he cleans the drain lines, he cleans the four bays.
Well, and he prevents.
And then he says, okay, you guys have it from now on, here's your O and M, take care of it. Unfortunately, this has taken 12 years or 15 years. So it's a protocol.
It's the more you speak of it, the more I think of it, they did clean the, the basins on the street. Maybe he's thinking about that and not the four bays.
Well, that's.
That's part of his.
And that's, in the conversations or the emails that I've sent to him have said that we need something for us to hang our hat on that things were clean. And if Taylor can say, yes, I cleaned this area here on this date, then that date is after all those houses were transferred, then that would be considered cleaning it after construction.
Right.
I don't know what evidence and documentation he has or what Taylor has.
They have never cleaned the four bays, ever.
No, with the, done the.
The streets.
And that's, that's actually the more important one. But I don't, again, we don't know what evidence is there. They haven't shown us anything. It would be easiest for us.
I mean, see, if you tried to charge it for it, that'd be a.
Well, when they clean that out, there would be sand and the sand would be showing up in the four bays because it rolls into it, all right? And not, not silt. Silt is the dirt and there's so much landscaping that's been done. The dirt rolled in when it was not lands, you know, the grass hadn't grown and hadn't taken, it wasn't for you.
When they cleaned out the catch basins, that was on his nickel and so we wouldn't have any record of it. We could, we could only, we could only guess it was.
But I think everyone's agreeing that.
I should be there before, two years.
But it's, it seems agreed that he's cleaned those, so that hasn't even come up, so I don't even wanna raise any more issues.
We don't, we don't.
Move on from here. But the idea is that he cleans up after construction, you guys do maintenance. That's the way it all works.
See, and part of our problem with, you know, again, with that, with his response is that he says they've cleaned them out, but we don't have any, we have, and we say that he hasn't and we don't wanna get into he says, she said, you know.
We just, we need documentation. We need something, some agreement. If Taylor says, if he says it and Taylor says that he did it and charged them and they can find something that looks like an invoice, then we have to, I mean, if it's two years ago on an invoice, I don't know unless someone has a photograph.
Who's gonna ask for that documentation? You guys?
Yes. Or you can, if you're talking and negotiating with them and saying, okay, we'll accept, if you can prove or show to us it, all these other basins or four bays were cleaned before whatever it is two years ago, that's great. And then you'll clean these last two, then done, let's get it done and move on from here. But if you guys don't think.
Do we say that the planning board has asked us for that documentation?
Uh, no, but it's just simple.
You know, we're trying to figure this out. Do you have a date when you did these cleanings? Maybe a bill between Taylor and us or Taylor, whoever he turns to.
I've explained that, that basic idea of after construction, the developer cleans it and then it's the O and M after that. He's, I emailed or, I don't think I talked to him.
I had an instruction of several of the.
After construction and the drainage.
Bays, not, not the ones on the street now, the four bays.
The four bays, yep.
Never been done.
Yeah, well, and that's.
He would show that he's done something if he could show you when he did the.
Well, he's after they've taken out, guys have taken out the branches and things like that, but that's it. It's not a question of making that silt, silt out of there.
Just in case, you know, if you, if you would have cleaned it, he would have an invoice, right? That's what they are.
This last, the last response from Mike's day to, to you, to your minutes, was that they had been cleaned out and all silt removed. He did say that and I've got it right in my package here.
It sounds like he's talking about the catch basins.
But, well, no, he's talking about the four bays.
The key to this, those rods that were put in less than two months ago, they were never there. So we don't have a baseline.
So, I mean, and, and we understand, and if, if he had in fact cleaned them out somewhere along the way, then we would say, you know, we wouldn't have a problem with it, you know?
I think, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't, I've never done it. I don't do anything, I guess. But I would, I would, so I would have you ask him for this sort of documentation, just 'cause then you're very good at following up, you go to our meeting, so stay on him to get you that sort of stuff.
We can, we can do that.
Can they, can they go do a small test?
We can go in, yeah.
Well, if they, if they.
Take a hole and dig down. I want, I first, we have, first we have to find out if there's rock in the original design. If there's rock, then you just go down to the rock and you see if it's two inches or if it's eight inches. If there's two inches in the thing.
And I mentioned at the trustees meeting, I said, I attempted to take a shovel and I almost got my head taken off by the other trustee, don't you touch that.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. No, I, I understand their, their position. Somebody has to do that that's qualified.
Well, there's always, there's always an issue of, of liability if something happens. Liability if something, if you're going there digging and fall down and impale yourself on that, on that stake that they just put.
You can ask Jeff to do it. He could pay for that.
Well, Jeff is out, does a lot of maintenance for us and he also.
I agree, but he could.
So because it's a very delicate position to put him in sometimes.
No, no, I agree, but.
It is tough. If you, if you did rather than Jesus, but he was representing Keystone, even though he's not a maintenance guy, he was representing Keystone.
Yeah, that's why, I think I wrote what he said at the meeting, but, so he was representing Keystone.
And he said to somebody when we were doing that walk around and you said, yeah, well, yeah, he's gonna clean this up.
That's, he said, this is just work.
He said, he said, Mike's not gonna buy that. He's not gonna do that.
Don't blame Mike, he's been on this for a while and he's like, well, I'm done with it, I don't wanna spend any more money. And so now it's okay. We're gonna have him spend as much as is needed for him to do the job that is expected.
That's right. And that's, and that's what we're looking for.
We get the plans, we'll get him to somebody to tell us how much it's gonna cost and this, we'll figure it out from there.
Where the plans go from? Not from Mike, they're from.
Design?
But it's a different person than.
It's an engineering company. Mike's not an engineer.
Heritage, who's Mike's design company. Send them to Mike and Mike forward them onto us, I'll tell you.
Do they still work for him or are they?
What's that?
Are they his or is it a separate, independent engineer?
Oh, they are. They are. They have offices in Whitehamsville in Oxford, is it?
Yeah.
I think. And, and, but, but he does a lot of business for us.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine.
I mean, yeah, you came either. He's, he's done a lot. Okay, well, you know, we're just trying to keep on top of his, we saw what we had on the, on the agenda.
Actually, oh, I thought, I thought I took it off the agenda.
Well, the agenda, just as Angel Brook said, send visit update.
That's true.
So that's, you know, we just wanna, and again, we're just trying to do our due due.
We're going for ratings.
That's true.
Yeah, and we're trying to protect this. And, you know, and maybe, maybe in a few years we'll, you know, we'll run for one of your boards.
A few years, you have a couple of months.
Then again, maybe not.
Get the experience, we could do it.
Should we jump over to a couple of firms? I didn't expect to see him here.
Yeah, it's right there. Well, he sent an email.
If you wanna finish other things before, I'm gonna have to sit here, but he'll take me now.
Why don't they put him in the last one?
They bore him, bore him to death. And while he's sleeping, he'll take off.
Come on, we'll get that done and then, and that way we can race through the last stuff.
Wait, 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 the Cumberland firms.
Minor changes.
Okay, minor changes, that's right. Well, thank you very much. So, as you know, Tom, ready, they can mostly get anywhere. So we received approval from this board in January, I think it signed the decision in February, and we still, we did not have approval yet from the Water Supply Protection Division of DCR. Subsequently, we did receive that approval, but they wanted some changes to the plan. And we also got DOT sign off and they wanted some changes to the plan. And we thought, well, while we're doing this, we wanna change as well and.
Sign bigger?
Yeah. I was actually thinking about how I should come in and say that and I was like, you know, I don't know how I wanna go over. So, um, so I submitted this to Melanie last week with a kind of a red line version of the, the plans. Um, with the approved, yeah, these aren't red line, these are the final, I've got two copies of the final and I can point out to you what the differences are.
Hey, can you just use these microphones to hold it down?
So the first. On the site plan, we've got, can't see it here, but the canopy has been extended over the entirety of the fueling islands. Before we had it a little bit smaller, it's just been extended.
About how much, how much bigger, like a couple of feet?
Yeah, I think a couple of feet in each direction. I couldn't tell you exactly how much, but it does cover the entire footprint and that was at the request of DCR. Doesn't affect the truck turn at all because the trucks are still high enough, so no problem there.
The only thing I think we'll have is VHB's gonna have to look at like some structural issue, maybe make sure that it's still okay.
Yeah, and I think we used graves because I think VHB had a, had a conflict. So that's the first piece, is the canopy. We also have this vestibule and that was, nobody asked for that, but that's something Cumberland Firm is now doing on their stores or would like to do. So this store will actually be one of the first. So I've brought some photos if you wanna take a look at what it's gonna look like.
Like a weather?
Yeah, absolutely, with sliding doors in the, in the front.
Keeps the heat in.
Precisely, especially with this New England weather that we have. And so it doesn't push, it doesn't bump anything out, it doesn't bump the sidewalk out, there's no changes to the, where the sidewalk is or the amount of impervious coverage that there is. But it, what we did do was we moved the ADA compliance space a bit to the side there just because we had it right in front, but we need them to be able to come in and then access it so it's not right in front, straight in front. Bingo. Exactly. So that was one of the other changes at the request of the Department of Transportation But what we did do was we moved the ADA compliance space a bit to the side there, just because we had it right in front, but we need them to be able to come in and then access it, so it's not right in front, straight in front. Bingo, exactly. So, that was one of the other changes at the request of the Department of Transportation, because we actually had a bit of a back and forth, because they were thinking, well, what is it gonna do to the timing of the signals here? So, they are actually gonna study that, what's gonna happen to the signals. But what they wanted us to do is put a "do not block" letters on the road, and then put up a couple of, two signs that say "do not block driveway", and you've got those specifications in there.
See, more signs.
We also included a note because they wanted us to maintain the landscaping at a certain height, and also to ensure pedestrian safety, so if there's any fallen buds or flowers, to pick them up immediately so they don't cause a slippage hazard.
Who was this?
DOT.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's the extent of the changes that we're requesting.
So, tonight, you're filing an amendment or...
Yeah, so that's the request. So, I know that both the approval and the zoning bylaw says, if you make any changes, you have to have one for each site. So, this is our request to have this be the final plan for the site. It didn't look like resubmitment was necessary, because I respectfully wouldn't categorize these as any major modifications. And we are looking to submit, and this is one of the first that we'd like to have in construction besides the picture that I saw. And so, we expect to file the application for the building permit, pay those fees, and also pay the engineering construction review fees, hopefully, if you approve this, hopefully this week or beginning of next week. Because this hopefully gets in construction May 1st, was the deadline we were giving away at the beginning.
Can I ask you a question? Why do they want that, DCR want the, extend those canopies?
I think...
Is that a reason?
Would you have a better explanation?
I wasn't involved, but I had heard that, it was a comment that came from, I think, DEP.
Okay.
And I think DEP had some standard that, I don't know...
The size?
Yeah, the canopy covers...
Covers the drainage little notches.
What are they called, a little...
Positive limiting barriers.
So, they don't want rainwater getting in there? They don't want those to rinse it out.
The volume of those little cracks is a certain volume to contain a spill. If the rainwater comes in there, it fills up the volume so that the gasoline...
So, it would just run out and sort of be...
Makes a lot of sense. Yeah, and that was actually asked, we went through the underground storage tank process, and one of the select board members asked that same question, so I think they've seen it before. So, that's, I think that's the best explanation. Good job.
Good job. I'm not sure that's the DCR. It's not the official explanation.
Why did DOT, what was their thing about maintaining the...
Leaves.
Where?
Here?
No, the landscaping.
Let me look at the landscaping.
And it's only your landscaping, I mean, like what about...
Correct, yeah, it's only our landscaping as well.
So, it's where the sidewalk is gonna be and stuff?
Um, yeah, exactly. Everything we've got here, they'd want to be maintained. They want to make sure that the tree height remains a certain for site distances and it remains maintained.
So, does this add to your O&amp;M or something like that?
Yeah, we've got, yeah, the owner maintenance responsibilities right on this plan for the landscaping and a couple of bullet points.
And so, you will also be responsible for cleaning the sidewalk when it snows?
I don't know, to be honest, I don't know what the bylaws here in town say, if it's our responsibility.
You have sidewalk, right?
Yeah, that's...
Well, the situation, it's not your responsibility to do it, but if you want it done, you'll do it. Because we don't have a vehicle, I don't think they do any sidewalk maintenance up Route 12.
We gotta get more people to have sidewalks to make a...
Exactly.
Now you say that.
Two meetings ago, get the minutes out. Didn't you say exactly that?
The traffic study that DOT is gonna do, are they gonna send you a report or something?
Yeah, I would imagine that would, so I wasn't privy, I wasn't in any of those. I just kinda, I got it secondhand from Colleen, who's with McMahon Associates. And what she said was they were concerned about that line backing up to, I think, backing up into here to cause this to back up, which would affect here. I mean, so it's kind of a domino effect. So, they wanted to make sure that this was clear so that people could get...
And also too, when people are coming out of the software school at night, this light is very, very quick and then stays red for a long time. So, people coming out of here, people coming from here, you know, also too, is there's gonna be a road, there's gonna be a section of this road where people can just make a right turn if they wanted to, right?
Yep.
That's not yours though.
It already is.
Yeah, I think it already is.
It's already there.
It's already two lanes.
Right turn they can make.
Yeah, I think, once it gets to a certain point, I think it'll...
You see, this is good that they're not gonna block that, because if somebody's coming out here and only wants to make a right turn, they can just go around those people. So, these people back here are gonna have to stay back here if there's an extended line, and these people coming out will be able to... These people here that are gonna go left are gonna, that's where the issue is gonna be, because they're gonna have to stay right here till this line clears up, and then hopefully, somebody's gonna be nice enough to let them out.
Or they can take a right and go back into the traffic.
Right, right.
So, they will send you something about...
Yeah, I would have to imagine that.
I don't know if they're gonna send something...
This is significant or just insignificant?
Now, we go to the, maybe...
I don't know how we can get a new, I don't know the procedure to get a new plan to replace the old approved plan. I mean, what's the, and it seems a lot of minor stuff that I don't mind and doesn't seem bad, except for the canopy, sort of a structural idea there. But everything else, I think, is fine. I just, I don't know how, how in a procedure way do we replace our sign print with just a new sign print?
Well, we can sign this new one. Is that how you're able to make copies of ours? So, you'll be able... You got it. So, what I, and I haven't done it yet, but you had asked the last time to have, and this is, I have your signed version here. So, what I was gonna do is have this entire scanned in, have this entire thing scanned in, and then, so you'd have the old approved and then the new final approved.
And this shows up as a rev?
The floor plans, because they haven't changed, and they will be, these are 100%, so these are ready for the building permit. These are ready, yeah, exactly, they are ready to go. This will be the only change to here. Yeah, and it'll just, it just highlights that vestibule coming up.
And that's not in here?
No, that's not in here. So, I will have for you a complete final 100% set.
And where will that be?
This will be replacing A1.1, which is what, A1.1?
And that, and the old drawing or in the new drawing?
I will put it, you will have one entire set.
So, this will be amended a little bit?
What we do is we have our engineers do 100% and our architects do 100%, because they're both getting different, well, they're getting a permit, but they're both finishing 100% of different things. So, this is 100% of what we're gonna build for the engineering, and then I'll get the 100% so the architects put those on the back.
Scan and do it, okay.
Exactly. You had only signed Sheet 1 and Sheet 4, which was the cover page and then the site plan. So, that's what we asked for.
Wouldn't anybody have any opinion about whether we should or should not?
Well, the only question, have the vestibule, does that count towards parking appointments?
You mean like building area or something?
Well, I mean, if they had 4,500 square feet, and they needed 17 parking spaces, or 17...
Just bump them over to the...
Or 18.9, so they gave 17, and this new addition puts them over to need 18 parking spaces. We want to make sure that you're...
22 spaces is what we need, and we've got 22 spaces. They've done the calculation here with the new, yeah, because it's an additional 48 square feet, so 4,700...
48?
48 square feet.
Really?
Yep.
And we're not worried about that.
All it is, and we've got that.
So, that's fine.
Plus the 12 seats, 22 spaces required. You'll see that.
Is this something that they're gonna do in all the new stores going forward?
Yep.
So, the old stores that are of the new design, I'm not gonna get those?
I'm not sure yet. I had, I mean, to be honest, on the record but off the record, so we've done permitting, let alone North Adams, and I've been trying to get in touch with those boards and building commissioners to get their approval, because they have not been built yet. So, I know as far as those, I wouldn't, I don't know what structurally would go involved into retrofitting the existing new stores, but...
So, our store is gonna be the first one to have this?
One of the...
What's this picture of?
So, that's why I say one of the, this is, that's one under construction, exactly.
You can tell by all the construction vans.
That's right. Yeah, I mean, I think, actually, this is a good thing, because the one in Northborough, the minute you open the door, that draft goes right in, because it's the door that's right, you know, right there. And so, and the cashier is standing like right in front of the door. So, when that door opens and that wind is howling, the cashier is getting the full blunt of it.
Yep.
But we're nothing like Northborough. That's a much nicer place.
I understand that, I understand that. I'm just saying, this wood design came up with a really good...
We're on such a big slide, no wind is gonna...
Yeah, the window will be blocked by...
I like this that they expected this, because now, you know, like you said, the water's not gonna go where it doesn't need to be. And also too, is that it gives more protection for people standing on there to, you know, to refuel and stuff, you know, to fuel and stuff. That's a really...
I think it's improved.
And as far as the canopy goes, it's the same look canopy, just a little...
Yeah, everything's the same. I think the way that they're designed, they could go out to this extent, but I would have to imagine it's probably a cost saving measure to keep them in a little bit, make them a little bit smaller, and maybe just make them as big, but I think structurally...
And I'm glad that DOT finally listened to me about this like him.
We actually were wondering if you had any involvement in that. We said, you know, the guy who always shows up, I said, yeah, from the... Did he get to him? I don't know if he did that, but it was conspiracy.
The thing was, is that when she came to do the traffic study, you know, and Vinnie can tell, because Vinnie's been lived here for a long time, you know, is that they seem to do traffic studies during the week, but on that Route 12, it's especially important that they do the traffic study on Saturday, because that's when there's the most, you know, there's a lot of traffic, especially up here. This road right here in front of this area going all the way to Worcester, on Saturdays is usually very, very busy.
Sign it and get them out of here, so...
I'm just glad that...
Yeah, no, I think, and we talked about this, I think, before the underground storage tank, but when they looked at the Saturday, there was some difference. I mean, the problem is they're looking at numbers, you know, they're not out there living here every single Saturday trying to get out of the road to take a left and...
Because I know this road that's down here, it's on the other side of this property, it's over by, what's the name of that?
Checkerboard.
Checkerboards. That is a real pain to get out on Saturday mornings.
So, we should have Cumberland Farms put a light up there?
No, no, no. No, I mean, this is good that there's a light there that's gonna shut off my consumption. I just think people coming out of the parking lot. I'd appreciate, I'd appreciate a vote.
I think you guys should sign it. They don't have a light anymore.
Do the engineers have to review it?
I think it's a minor change.
It's a minor change, but it's, I don't think Graves doesn't have special engineers. People, do you? I mean, that's wrong.
It's not a convenience store.
It's very inconvenient when the canopy falls on your car.
You got it. There are no structural...
I mean, I'm all in favor of doing it, and whatever Graves would find, we can...
Graves is not a structural firm.
Oh, then on the just site plan?
That's why, right.
Well, fine then, I guess it's fine.
I'm pretty sure they're not structural, but it's...
And I can get you, if you want, I can get you a statement in writing from an engineer.
Building inspector's gonna be reviewing it anyway.
Yeah, and I mean, they stamped this, so if it wasn't safe, I'm...
Well, that's the other thing, all the other things are not cosmetic, but sort of inconsequential as far as...
No, it's an engineer, we should be all set.
Okay, and then to get this to replace that, do we want to make a motion that we reconsider?
No, we reconsider, it's a great idea.
Yeah.
We should do this all by ourselves.
Try and no signs? She's not...
It wasn't publicly noticed, so I don't think we can. Yeah, I guess just a motion to amend your approval to include the minor modifications.
The only thing I'm concerned about there is that...
Motion to change the approved plans to be whatever date these plans are, and have all the changes be reflected on the as-built plans.
3/14/16, March 14th.
March 14th.
Yeah.
I'm having, okay, and the only discussion I would say is, it's not gonna go through as an amended site plan. It's just gonna go through as...
No, it's just, the site plan approval is the approval.
It stands.
It refers to something.
And you're changing that reference.
Right. So, when we, hopefully someday soon, when we do the as-built review and the approval letter, we'll have to make sure that we refer to the correct plans.
Okay. Where is the rim on this thing?
Where is the...
Like the revision, like if we were gonna refer to that number?
Revision 13, 3/11/2016, and we've got 100% set. You can say the 100% set if you...
Well, what we'll probably refer to is the set signed on birthday, 3/23.
Yep, that's good, it's fine.
There's a motion hanging out there. It's been submitted.
All in favor? Or any, actually, any other discussion? Does he want to say something?
Second.
Oh, he's the second.
Are you the third?
Third.
Third.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And then you have...
If you want to sign, I've got two of them, so if you want to sign, if you want to keep one, I'll take one, and then I'll scan and get them all together to you.
What's that plan dated?
Revision 13 dated 3/11/2016.
13, lucky number.
And like I said, we're trying to get this...
3/23.
You still shoot them for, for Labor Day weekend?
Yep, like, there should be...
You're saying May 1st?
May 1st is the date that we're trying to break ground and get in there. That's what this, the entire time since...
The construction starts May 1st?
That's the idea, yeah, if not, sooner.
First they gotta clean up that land.
Yeah, exactly.
There's a truck parked there.
Yeah, a whole bunch of...
And the old sign.
And the old drainage still isn't fixed, right?
Well, I mean, that's, as far as our site goes, because I think there's a huge leach field, I think, on that site.
Yeah, that used to be the old septic system.
Being abandoned or something.
It used to be the old way?
That was the septic system before we got sewers.
Mall.
Really?
Yeah. That's why they didn't have a building up front. Page 1 and page 4? Perfect, that's a good use out of those.
Right, final, exactly.
And also, because I'm here, so I'm sure I figure...
Cumberland Farms pens?
No, unfortunately, they're not. They're just bacon lusen pens.
We can't take...
They're under $50, so certainly not give a...
That you can't have. Just save your memory, bye.
It's not the gold, the pen, right?
We won't forget you.
Not yet.
Anybody?
I hope so.
Oh, there's a second plan here.
Oh, I'll get to it.
We expect them to serve us.
I'd be happy to...
Can we have a tax?
Yeah, both of them.
Can we add the, you know, the out-of-town tax, so we can actually, it'll be a tax on everything bought at this Cumberland Farms that funds planning board activities or something?
Oh, there's an idea. Well, we have a meals tax, we have an additional meals tax in town.
But I want like an additional like .001%, that the planning board goes to us.
Yeah.
That's a nice idea.
I mean, while we're, you know, taking care of things.
Not sure.
Oakdale, I'll have one in Buckswash, Deerfield.
I wonder if it matters that Cheryl... We're signing at the 4th.
Oh, two sets, that's why.
Yeah, there's two sets with two pages.
Very close to it. We're working with DOT right now.
Get the candle and then his, I think, his red roof or something.
Yep, 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 right in another area, actually. I'll be in, I think Hudson, not for Cumberland Farms, but for an assisted living facility.
With a kombi spell right in?
I should bring all these two plans together, see what we can accomplish.
Hey, if they could wait, they could have built it over on Fortune North, because those are the farm projects in the city.
See, you said it right there, right? There's no discrepancy, the Cheryl was not able to, we have a norm for...
When they said, I said, you know, why did they take it?
Are we gonna ask them for a, if it says that structurally or...
Building inspector's, building inspector. And we need to do any instructional assessment?
The first one.
Was it first, right?
Okay.
One of the reasons the price was... The wetland stuff and the traffic stuff.
I think you just hit Matt.
All set?
I think so.
Yes, let's go.
And I will find out a way to, I'll drop those off at Bowler, and they'll take care of scanning and getting everything.
And adding that sheet, the floor plan sheet or whatever you have to get from your architect.
Yeah, they'll take care of that for sure.
Sorry, we can't have, you're welcome to come to the next meeting.
Of course.
You can always watch them on TV.
That's right. You don't play them at finders or keepers or anything like that?
Maybe you're all just on YouTube, you can, make your own...
That would be interesting.
Yes, why is it playing for that? Maybe you can, you know, on the little screen on the tank, you could play live streaming planning board meetings.
As long as, what was the condition in, no audio?
No, no audio. Oh, yes, they are, they couldn't do it with audio after that. See if he's still paying attention. He's good, he caught it.
Thanks again, I really appreciate it. You guys are a great forward to...
Entertaining and going for ratings.
Fantastic. Do you need anything looking over there?
They got the pen now, so...
Next time you want a pen with your name on it.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right, so, sign by law, she did a great job, let's go and just get it done.
Yeah, yeah, I had some ideas to simplify if you want to consider them.
Absolutely. So, what she wrote or in general?
No, she just, where was it? It says the sign in the first paragraph, the name of the center must utilize at least 20% of the total sign area, the minimum letter height shall be eight inches. Do we even need a minimum letter height?
No. I mean, I don't think we do accept that we are carrying it over from before.
Yeah, and that's the thing is that, I think people... I mean, if they want the signs to be legible, they're gonna ensure that the signs, but if it's not, does that really... It's not my business. Right, adversely impact, you know, the area.
I mean, I guess that's, that's sort of a town thing, like, do you wanna, I don't know, make sure everybody, all the signs are sort of minerally, minimally lettered, I guess, and uniformly large and, you know, I mean, that's sort of a...
So, I think that's a good point. I mean, I would be in favor of at least crossing it out here and bringing it to the public hearing and see what people have to say. And let them know that we're considering dropping that. She did, yeah.
Did you say any word or PDF?
This is a word version that we can edit before we send it out. I think it was word.
I'm pretty sure I've done it only in Friday, I have to, it's gonna be published in the paper, yeah, it has to be, because it's gonna go for the...
Is this the notice? Oh, this is the notice, this is the thing that goes with the notice.
Yeah, right.
Can you do it?
Say that again?
So, what's the, what's the change you want?
We need it tomorrow.
Just to cross out, minimum letter height shall be eight inches.
Let's cross out that sentence.
Yeah, so just, it would be this red?
Just to consider.
Yeah, I feel like then we'll see what people say.
This one.
So, that, we need to make it a red letter and then erase it?
Erase it in the final, but red letter right now, red line.
Red, cross it out, red line, yeah.
Cross out red line, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's...
Red letter.
Document change, then whatever. Yeah, that's what we're gonna do. But I'm unsure of the debt, I don't know if she...
Probably just did track changes.
Track changes, so I made it come up.
I would think so, yeah. And that was, and then do we want to, since we're putting changes in red, the last one on the property, should we make that on red, not just bold? I mean, it's a kind of... Well, the strikeouts are red, the bold is the addition, right? Yeah, I mean, do, well, I mean, I guess that's all right.
So, on the property is new, so you want to indicate that it's new?
Uh, when I use track changes, additions are also in red.
Okay.
Again, not that it matters.
Why, did she do them in bold?
The other thing though too, so she crossed out located, I think it reads better if we leave located in, and be located on the property, as opposed to, and be on the property? Oh, so she just did that, I thought we were getting, I didn't even pick that up. When I asked about the 10-foot, there's the 10-foot setback is in like 12 different places, not just here. So, if we're really gonna do that, I was thinking she would have gone through and looked where all those places are. So, that, if we're really gonna do that, I was thinking she would have gone through and looked where all those places are.
For the notice, I think we can get away with that, because it gets the point across, that that's one of the things we're gonna address, or do you think we have to be a little more formal?
Um, yeah, so in the notice, we can do that, and then.
I mean, in the real document, we'll, we'll find them all.
And then throughout the, throughout the sign.
Okay.
If that works.
I think we can do that.
Yeah, because I mean, this is, I mean, I'm not saying this is an abbreviated version, but it's certainly located, you know. And I like located, I mean, I'm.
I think so.
Yeah, so we wanna leave that in.
And be located on the property is what we'd wanted to read it.
Yep.
And I did like his, um, new additions are not just bold, but red.
Are they in a different color, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Different color, that may be.
Like, you wanna make green?
And at the bottom, you know, we can, and the bottom, you know, we can put like a.
A key?
Key.
Red with strike through is deleted from.
additions.
The old, the old version.
Deleted from old version and whatever.
Yeah.
Green or blue or something like that, or.
So, you can do that?
Very light yellow. I've never done that.
I haven't either.
Which one?
Yeah, yeah, but.
I can do it.
Yeah. Should be ready.
I'll put a little key in the bottom.
And can we edit that stuff too?
Yep.
And I'll, I'll cross out the sentence that, that Vinnie.
Minimum water heights, yeah.
As well, in red.
I think we, we discussed that a little bit last meeting too, that we didn't know how significant, should it be eight, should it be ten?
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yes.
And we're sort of going back and forth.
The only other change I was gonna suggest for that section, instead of just putting, um, the number two business centers, just put section E two, because that's where it comes out.
Yeah.
Um, just to.
Make it match whatever that looks like.
A little bit more precise, because some of the other amendments come from other, you know, section C or section.
Okay.
Just so people know right where to look.
Yes, no, that's good. The other thing I had was on the first line of the top paragraph, standing signs identifying retail business centers or office industrial technical parks or centers, says shall contain the name and logo or trademarks? How about may, instead of shall? Shall means they have to have a logo and a trademark and all that other stuff, and if they don't.
Yeah, you do, shall contain the name and.
I would say just may.
May contain other things?
I would just change.
Shouldn't we have some requirement that they have to, a park is required to identify itself?
So, I, I wrote that.
That's true, yeah.
As coming from, so this part of the, the, the standing signs, the section of the sign schedule.
Yep.
Where it seems to require that if a business center, for example, is going to have a sign, you have to identify the name of that business center, for example.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, I agree, I, so.
So, maybe we don't need a, maybe we don't need a logo or a trademark.
Right, shall contain the name and may.
Shall contain the, you know.
May contain the address, logo, trade, all the rest of the stuff there.
Name and say at least a number, so, you know, for, you know, fire purposes.
Well, that's, yeah.
Actually, well, they need the name and the address.
Yeah.
It's up to them if they wanna put the logo and the trademark.
Do you wanna simplify again and just cross out and logo trademarks of the office part of center?
Right. And we just say shall contain the name and address of the office Parker Center.
Yeah, and, and that really puts forth our, our requirement, but not.
Yeah, and it doesn't say they can't include a logo or trademark.
But it, that's, if they were asking what the sign needs, that should be clear.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a great suggestion.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yeah, looks good.
Alright, I'll make that change as well then.
And it needs to have the address.
Contain the name and address of the office Parker Center. Any other changes to that section?
That was it, that was my changes to all of them.
Alright, great. I had a question, so, and the next one down, the sign schedule?
Yeah.
Again, so that's C two, so I'll put in the, the C. Um, the question that I have, so, and I remember, I think, last meeting when we were talking about this, we were wondering, uh, if memory serves, we were wondering why we had sort of the first part or the second part?
Right, and they contradict a little bit?
Yeah, and so, in, as I was rereading this, uh, between last meeting and today, it occurred to me, it, it seems like this section was originally intended to mean that for the top section, if a business center is going to have a sign, it can exceed sixty-four square feet in area, and that's just a sign identifying the business center. It doesn't have a sign to any of the individual businesses within the business center. Or if you want your sign to include some of the individual businesses.
And that's why it's only a business center.
It applies to this one.
Okay.
Then it applies to the second paragraph.
Okay.
The second paragraph allows both, whereas the first paragraph only allows identification of the business center, but not any of the individual businesses therein.
C two.
So, do we wanna change that?
Well.
Or make it clear?
I think all we need is the second one, right? Because if, if the first one is like a subset of the second, if you wanna do the second one and just say, it, it must be at least, the business center sign.
Seventy-eight.
Has to be at least twenty percent of the total sign, well, it can be a hundred percent.
Yes.
So, that's the sign.
Yes.
So, it's covered. And then if they wanna have names, that's, that's a great point.
Restricting them by only having the second part, they can still do.
That's a great point, yeah, absolutely.
Because I just looked at it, I'm like, well, either I get sixty-four square feet or.
Right.
And I thought there was another number in there somewhere, that's what I.
Yeah, so, so this covers both, and if they, if they were, if they were going for sort of the original, what was the intent of the original paragraph two.
They could, or one.
They can, they've just gotta use at least twenty percent for the business center identification.
Right, do you think you have to make the note in there that it, they don't have to identify all the individual businesses? I mean, is that, is that kind of the point of this first one?
I don't think there's anything in here that suggests that they do. Like, for example, that's part of what we're proposing to delete from the first section, that sentence about not more than twelve of the tenants.
Okay.
We've gotten rid of that, so I think it's clear that we're.
Oh, of that, yeah. I bet I don't have this one.
No. Um, but it goes to the, the same point about, about having.
It's up to them.
Yeah, I don't think there's any requirement that each business within a center has to have a sign.
Has to have their spot on the sign.
Yeah.
And I think there are some business centers in town that don't, because it's sort of a minor business in back.
Yeah.
You know, it's on.
Yeah, or else the place doesn't have people coming to them, it's just a plumbing place where they.
Right.
Leave, they go in every morning.
He's got a business, but he doesn't need to, he doesn't advertise.
Doesn't need, yeah, right. So, I guess the only question I had on that. Like, only question I had on that one, same thing is that, there, but there is no maximum size, is that somewhere else? Because we take out the not to exceed sixty-four square, square feet, and not to exceed eighty square feet, so if we take those two items out.
Yeah, and just leave as percentages.
Maximum, and so we wanna add a sentence in there, the maximum sign area is eighty square feet.
Yeah, I, I thought it was, let me see.
It's something about a hundred square feet someplace.
Yeah, I think you're right. Business centers. Wait, is it in the section that we just, yeah, we, we crossed that out?
The eighty square.
We're proposing, so in the old.
Well, we did twen, we, we changed from square feet to percents.
Right.
And then, maybe that's where we.
Right, but I think we lost the size, so I can make a two hundred square foot.
Uh, you're right.
Same, but.
You're right.
So, we need to set some limit.
Yeah.
So, we set eighty, or forty, if I get my way, but.
It can't be smaller than the other signs. We could say portions identifying business center or signs of, in front of Cumberland Farms.
So.
That's only right.
Previously, it was, the maximum was a hundred square feet.
It was?
Well, the previous language, the language that's, that's changed.
It was twenty square feet, minimum twenty square feet, and it could not, the other piece.
Could not exceed twenty, could not exceed eight.
Oh, okay.
So, that would have been a total.
So, then we just say the maximum sign area.
So, we can just add.
One hundred square feet.
Hundred square feet.
Right, wherein maximum sign area.
Right, unless.
And then they can wave.
Is a hundred square feet. Alright, I'll add that in, uh, you know, the appropriate addition color.
Now, I'm wondering about not to exceed twenty square feet, must, do you wanna just say, instead of the unit being percent, being square feet?
No.
Must be at least twenty square feet?
So, this way.
Oh, but then it could go everywhere.
Because if they choose a, if they choose a sixty square foot sign, then that's gonna be less, right?
Okay, alright, sounds good.
So, I think that's good, it's, there's flexibility in there for them to choose.
Yes?
In that business center, are you gonna change, it says that such signs may include the name of not more than twelve of the tenants, so.
That's not there.
Is that gonna be changed?
Scratched.
We're proposing, we're proposing to just remove it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, they can do whatever they.
It has sixteen, so that's why I was just curious.
Yeah, that's the one.
It's in violation?
No.
He said it wasn't.
Which one's involved?
That's right.
Said it wasn't. Good luck tomorrow, not a buzzard Tony.
Just bring it right.
Uh, wonders.
I got my whistle tonight, I probably should bring it tomorrow, I had that with the eight-year-olds, so.
Yeah.
Alright, next section, D three E, I guess it's I.
Yeah, we may wanna put the whole section, five point six, three D.
Yeah, like, like you noted, this whole thing.
Yeah.
Change it to D three.
The top five point six, but.
D three, one, E, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll include that.
So, like on the top one.
And then, and then, like, up here, it was.
Yes.
The notation paged in parentheses, we should probably do that, switch this around, so it's like that.
Yep, no problem, no problem. Make consistent. Um, but it, but as to the, uh, the substance of the change, is that, uh, is everybody happy with that?
With the, the full digital portion?
Yeah.
Image of.
Right. Therefore may change, but no portion of the image may scroll, twirl, change color, et cetera. Yeah, that seems to be what we had talked about.
I mean, I think that, that, the selectmen didn't dock at that, it was just the timing.
I think that's, yeah, that's, that's what the intention was, so.
Yeah, where is the timing one?
This one?
The one that we removed the.
Yeah, we have to put in, this doesn't have the original.
Yes, mine does, for some reason.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
We, we missed that.
More than every sixty seconds.
Oh, yeah, we need to put that back in.
Yeah, I'll make sure that's in there.
Oh, this must be an old version then.
Wait a minute, what I have, it used to read no more than once per minute, so let me fix that, once.
It's getting late, let's table the rest.
We're almost there, we're almost there. Alright, so I, I guess we're happy with that change, and then for this last section about for consideration, we just leave that there and we can talk to it, I suppose?
Yeah, that'll be just discussion points or something like that.
Alright.
Well, I think we have to say that we're proposing to add these, we have to say that we're proposing to add it in the.
For consideration to be added, is what, what the headline is.
For consideration, yeah, I guess that should.
I mean, that's what, that's.
For consideration proposed, yeah, okay, alright.
Fair enough. Yeah, no, good. And this'll, this is the, whatever, the, the thing that'll go along with the notate, the meeting, what do we call the thing that we publish on the paper?
Notice.
Meeting notice? And what other language do we need in the meeting notice? But.
What the changes are, where and when.
But not all this, not, as far as changes.
Signed by law changes, right?
Section five point six changes, I guess?
Changes to the sign bylaws, um.
And then the date.
Business centers, well, you can just say, it's all standing signs, right?
No, first is business center, then the sign, sign schedule.
We need to include the phrasing, just, to, whatever our notice is, we need it short, but include everything that we've got.
So, changes to, business center signage?
Yeah, it's really business center.
Standing.
Standing, it was standing signs and, uh, digital display signs, basically.
But the standing signs are only in the business center?
Yeah.
Does it change anything?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's just two.
The sign schedule again is standing signs in the business center?
Right. Business center standing signs and just, and digital.
And digital.
Display signs, that should do it, because the digital display signs.
Is the second.
Are the, the, yeah, the last item and, uh, the two last.
Yeah.
Or the two last paragraphs.
Is that, is that enough to, call something together, or?
Do, do you get the number of wordings?
Can you drown something with Chris?
Yeah.
Oh, thank God, I thought he was.
You gotta get it to, you have to get it to Melanie tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there any word limits?
Is what?
Number of wording.
The less, the less the cheaper.
Yeah, the number you pay or limits.
Uh, well, longer is the more the cost.
Alright.
It depends.
Alright, is there, what's the standard cost and you go over a certain number of words, is there something else, or is it?
No, C P, yes, I put in for, uh, conservation stuff, it's probably gonna be almost the same, it should cost like around thirty-six dollars, but.
That's alright, we got that.
And now that does specify the, um, conservation, you know, for the, you know, the section of the conservation law, you know, the, you know, such an application, and where it is, in that parcel, and the person's name, so it's probably gonna be about the same.
Yeah, probably.
Words, that, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna be.
It's gonna be fifty dollars or less, so.
Yeah, it could be something like that.
I wouldn't.
Would you do it twice?
No, do it twice, yeah, I don't, it could be fifty bucks, please, it could be, that could come up to one dollars, I don't think.
Glosses, front page.
Yeah, I'll be right in front of the page.
With your picture.
Is this supposed to telegram and gazette?
What?
Do you need a picture? I'll be in tomorrow morning.
Where do they do this?
In which year, where are they on?
In what paper?
Yeah, what paper they do this?
It's T G.
The one telegram.
Telegram and gazette.
Yeah.
On what day?
On one day?
Yeah.
Do the next two Wednesdays, hopefully.
Wednesday, I don't get the Wednesday paper, I get the Thursday paper.
It will go on, it'll be in.
On Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And the sixth.
I don't know, there's some program there running.
It'll be on the thirtieth, and it'll be in April sixth.
Yeah, and then the meeting is the thirteenth?
That'll work.
Yes.
Okay, that should be in here someplace.
Eight o'clock.
Oh, it is on there, good.
It'll have the eight o'clock, it'll have the solar, it's gonna be at seven.
So, oh, yeah. Eight o'clock's fine. I don't think they'll be banging down the doors for our meeting.
I don't think so either.
They use the same marketing people as Cumberland Farms, they call them.
Sixteen, sixth?
She reminds the quote in the paper?
Yeah.
No.
So that's a planning board hearing?
She, uh, who's the, the reporter that comes to these things, I suppose?
The girl?
Karen.
Sandy Magisman?
Kareen, Kareen.
No, who? The one, who replaced, um.
Kareen.
Yes, spell it funny, yes. Uh, she emailed me and said about the Cumberland Farms, that's actually how I found out that this was coming, was she was talking to me, you know, and, and I said, and I was curiously, you know, I was surprised about how little attendance there was at the meetings, considering the last time they came, and she actually published all that.
Yeah, nice.
You're a celebrity now.
That's why.
Uh, it was, it was a, like a three paragraph thing?
I saw it, I saw it, yeah.
But it was continued, it was like the shortest article, and then continued, seventy-eight, seventy-eight below the fold, I don't think it even.
Oh, this was in the Telegram, you were making a big paper?
I don't know, my wife said it to me, I don't remember.
It's not the banner, it was the Telegram.
Or the New York Times, or the Wall Street Journal?
The Journal.
Alright. Alright, so that's done.
I'll email someone.
Do we have to make a motion or anything, or is that just?
No, we just need to do it.
So will people, will they have something to see before the meeting of the changes?
This, this exact thing, well, my, this exact.
Before the meeting, so they can review it?
Yep.
So that when they come to the meeting, they can ask all the questions they're needing?
So this will be on the town website, or how the?
I don't know.
It'll be on our website, it'll be on the.
On our page.
On the visiting notices as well.
In Wall Street Journal?
As a second page on our agenda for that meeting, can we do two pages? If we get the wording.
I'm sticking this part of the agenda.
Or is it second page on the agenda?
No, 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 when we do the public hearing.
Yeah.
So there is a one-page, a one-page public hearing will be there. So that's a separate, we can put it underneath the public hearing, this is what they bought it.
Oh, I think he's just saying, so people, if they want to, they print out the agenda and this is just part of the, we'll print out.
I agree, but when they see the public hearing, notice.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know when that shows up.
Yeah.
They can see two pages.
Oh, we'd be grateful it'd be there too.
Yeah.
Good.
Grab a link to it or something.
Link, for the public hearing, there is a link, yeah.
Okay.
So all the public hearings, there is a link.
Yes.
So when the public hearing goes, the notice will.
That's what, this is what you print out.
Underneath, you know, we can print this.
Okay.
This is what we.
We'll talk to Cameron, I mean, we'll get her to.
No, but whatever we give, see for it, yeah, that's it.
I know, we just gotta tell her to do it.
She's doing it.
She's doing it?
Yes.
Notice with this information?
It'll, it'll be on the website.
Together.
Yes, public hearing notice.
Everything. Everybody's meeting, does that say, and go to the planning boards?
No, it'll be right on, it'll be all attached in one document.
Okay.
One-stop shopping.
Right.
Perfect.
We'll get care of that.
Anybody want to review the website, make suggestions? Well, except for putting this in the right place.
Yeah, I mean, I've reviewed the website, I, I have a dearth of new ideas, I, I generally am, I am able to find things.
Yeah.
And I think it's.
Right, it seems helpful and it, it makes sense, I think she's done a good job of laying it all out, so that you look, go into like the planning board, and there's a link to the zoning, the zoning map, the zoning bylaws.
Past decisions.
All the stuff we do, yeah, so, would be nice to update those, to get up to date with those, but that's another thing.
Is the phone number wrong again?
And, oh, when it slows down.
Do we have a new website link?
We will, they're gonna be transferring things on the town website, I think.
So what are we looking at, the existing website?
We're looking at our existing, and gonna make suggestions in how to improve it when she makes a change, so that she doesn't make the change over, and then have to redo it all, just make the change and get it done once.
I'll be happy with those, I guess. Oh, good, the only comment I had was the phone number on the mobile site was wrong for the longest time, and she fixed it, so I'm happy.
The mobile site?
Oh, the one that shows up on my phone, it's like smaller.
Okay.
It was your phone.
Yeah, right. Oh, nice.
So, I mean, anybody who, I, I, well, it's on the agenda here, but go write to Cameron if you wanna make a suggestion, I don't think we're.
Alright, if we can do that, she, she said if we wanted to have the forms, that was the, that was the encouragement to do forms, she can incorporate new and different things to coordinate between boards and committees if possible, she didn't have any suggestions, but she'd be willing to.
Walk that way?
Make things work.
I would love that, I think she should coordinate our, I don't know, our applications or something like that, I mean, I know they're there, we're gonna, if we're meeting that up, I guess we have to make a suggestion now.
Well, we have to come up with, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think she's willing to do what, if you see, like, I think we, Rajesh, you did all the work there, like Amherst and some other places, she's, she said, yeah, we can do something similar, so that.
No, I will get it done, I know, so this, we guess.
Isn't that what Chicago, on the, the Ford and Housing Trust meeting?
Yeah, but not about our website, I mean, or in general website, but we're doing other things as far as.
Database.
You know, the forms are just a one link, you know, that can be updated any minute.
Right.
Uh, replacing the forms, just have the same name.
Switch one PDF out for the.
No, they have the form, all the Word document in one place, so they name it, so the, when you click the link, it goes there, so if you change the file, if you send that file, replace the file with a new file, that's going to.
It works, yeah?
So it takes a second.
What about the review of illicit discharge by law? I don't even know, I don't wanna talk about it, actually, it sounds like, like a zit.
So.
Wow.
So we are all set with the electronic sign, right?
Well, we're gonna publish it, and then we're gonna.
So you won't be any, getting into any trouble with the select board?
No, and I think our timing is all good, I mean, we're within our sixty days.
We're, well.
You will be the one going to talk about, right?
That's right.
The chair.
If you get called to the principal's office.
Yeah, the chair will be there.
I'm not on my, uh.
No, we're all set.
After the election, I don't, because they have no.
But this, this should cover.
This is before the election, this is before the election.
Yeah, I just, right away through, changing the appointment, and eventually I will be.
F R I E D E N, write-in candidate for the planning board.
Oh, we, we'll put it on the, we'll put it on the Facebook, you know, so.
We should take over the whole website and just put it, it would just be propaganda for why the planning board.
Everyone write a mark for name, you know, write in.
Stickers, I'll send out stickers. I didn't wanna send anything, maybe I won't.
Alright, next.
Illicit discharge by law.
It's a bylaw that was, we got an email from Nancy Lucier, and DPW was, this is back when Anthony was handling things, and he suggested, and I think it made sense, I took a look at it at the time, it seems that there are bylaws in town for the stormwater bylaw, which the planning board is one of the enforcing or.
Approver.
Yeah, one of the agents.
I think with the license granting or whatever.
Yeah, light, yeah, we're somewhere, when someone goes, comes in with a subdivision site plan review, we're the approving authority under that bylaw, but that bylaw doesn't have any regulations written yet, so we're working on that, or hoping that's gonna happen sometime soon, but.
That's stormwater.
Even, right, well, that's stormwater, but illicit discharges are illegal stormwater discharges, that's what an illicit discharge bylaw is all about, that's what he wrote.
Okay.
So they have a draft of an illicit discharge bylaw, because in our current stormwater bylaws, there's no requirements for someone who's putting pollutants into our system to stop doing it, it's a permit for new people connecting and doing.
There's no definition of stormwater, so that.
No, there's a definition of stormwater, but illicit discharges, it's, if there's pollution coming into our.
So like, if it runs across their oil-ridden something or other, and that rainwater then becomes contaminated with oil, and then it goes into the storm sewer?
Right. And then it goes into our storm sewer, but then our storm sewer discharges to the Wachesa Reservoir, and then the Wachesa Reservoir folks say, your system is in violation. They're right, our system is discharging into their water, or even if we're going into the Blackstone, anywhere in the state, it's not just the Wa- Wachesa Reservoir, but the idea that our system discharges somewhere where it's not allowed to discharge, we're liable, we need to have some regulations and laws in place so that.
Say that we're under control.
You can't put those poisons into our, or pollutants into our system, that then go somewhere else.
So is it, should we make it an amendment to the stormwater bylaw?
No, he had it drafted as a separate illicit discharge bylaw, to go into the zone, into the general bylaws.
And he wrote the whole thing, or he copied it and found it?
Yeah, yeah, he got it, I think from Lester or somewhere, and kinda patched it together, but Mike is, Mike, last I knew, Mike was working on it.
We changed that post, we'll do both of them at the same time?
We don't have, it's a, it's not a zoning bylaw, it's a general bylaw, it has to be, I think the process is they have to have a public hearing, but I think the last thing was that the DPW was gonna talk with us, we were gonna work with them if he wanted our assistance, and then it was gonna go to the selectmen, and then the selectmen would hold a, or notice it in one of their meetings, as a public meeting, and listen to comments and review it, and then recommend it for town meeting.
Do we want you to assist or something, advise or?
Well, we would just make sure that it made sense with the other bylaws that we have, just to help them out, I mean, it's, it's not our responsibility as a planning board, but.
But I think if we have a public hearing, we should have somebody, I mean, the only problem is there's no, the DPW people that started are not here anymore.
Right, well, what I've done is that Nancy sent the reminder out probably a month ago.
Yep.
I followed that up a week or two later to Mike suggesting that if he has a draft to send it to us, so that we can look at it at this meeting.
Which Mike?
Mike Kittredge, the acting DPW director.
Oh, okay, alright.
And so I asked him if he could do that, I know he's busy with also his spring planning and actual work stuff. So it looks like he didn't get it, and I asked to get it on the agenda because I was hoping it was gonna get in, and it didn't, and also just to bring you guys up to date.
Okay.
And I thought, I thought the email went out to everybody, but I'm not sure.
Probably not.
I don't recall.
No, I didn't get.
It wasn't real exciting, but it was.
I read all my business emails, exciting or, well, if I get them, they're not in, I don't.
They're a bit of trash.
Yeah, I don't search the junk as much as I should, I guess.
So basically, it's something that's gonna come to us, we're not responsible for hosting the meeting or holding anything, but.
But we should read it.
We've got some experience doing bylaws, and kinda looking at the petty little minutia stuff that needs to get looked at when you do a bylaw. And I think I offered.
We can be a facilitator in this process.
Right, we'd be happy to help, he's trying to do a good job, let's help him do a good job.
Absolutely.
So, we are, I have a, because not this, the.
Well, let's just finish, or do you want to just call it done and put it on the.
Well, we just put it on, we'll put it on hold until we hear some DPW or the selectmen saying they need, they want us to do something with it.
DPW, DPW, do they, does he ever come into this building?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Melanie, if you see him, you wanna just remind him to.
No, you wouldn't.
Kittredge?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I think he's aware of it, I think he's just buried with a lot of stuff to do, and I think we now have a new town administrator, and they're hot on the movement to hire a full-time DPW director, so it may be Mike, it may not be Mike, I don't know what all the details are, but I think that process is moving ahead, I haven't, I don't know for sure, but I think the town administrator, the new town administrator is working on that.
Permanent town administrator?
Yes.
She started in nineteen fifty.
Do you have a comment on my?
Oh, she hasn't started yet.
No, nineteenth of April.
Okay.
And the closeout date for the DPW was on March eighteenth, which was last Friday.
You mean for people?
Applications.
Okay, did you, do you have a comment on this bylaw?
The stormwater policy, that's a zoning bylaw, right?
No, it's, stormwater bylaw is a, is a general bylaw.
Okay, now, when Anthony was here, he was at a selectmen meeting and said, told the selectmen that the state was revising the stormwater, um, bylaw. Okay, so, we don't have an illicit, um.
Discharge.
Discharge bylaw as of right now.
Correct.
Okay, so, if it's not a planning board, who is the one, who would be, what board or who would instigate this, in other words, who's responsible for this bylaw, and who would be responsible for holding the public hearing?
Um, a combination of the DPW and Board of Selectmen. I'm pretty sure that's.
The Board of Selectmen is the board, DPW would sort of be hosting the whole thing 'cause they came.
They have the background and they do the presentation, it's similar to when they do personnel bylaw changes, personnel is a separate thing, it's not zoning, we don't have to deal with any of that.
Then this would have to go to the bylaw committee?
It's a bylaw, yes, so it would go to bylaw committee, I assume, yes.
Would Concon have anything to do with this?
Um, they would have, they would probably be requested for comments, it's a good thing for them to make comments on, yeah, but they wouldn't have to have any official support
I don't think they have any jurisdiction, really.
Right.
You know?
Right, it's separate than the wetland.
Just out of curiosity, why is this all of a sudden, why didn't we never have one? I mean, if it's.
Well, because we haven't had.
If it's such, if it's such an important thing, part of the stormwater, you know, bylaw, you know, I mean, people could have been doing this who knows how long.
I think that's right.
Now, why all of a sudden, I mean, why wasn't this done?
Well, 'cause the EPA now is enforcing the regulations to not pollute, they're actually coming down on some of the smaller communities.
Okay.
It's a whole alphabet soup thing, it's, the EPA is enforcing this new MS four permit, municipal separate storm sewer systems.
Right.
So that permit is issued in the town, is subject to that, because we're, we are close enough to Worcester that our population density triggers us to, to follow that requirement. Part of that requirement is mapping and showing that you have ordinances in place to protect against pollutant discharges, this is one of those things, the stormwater bylaw was one of the initial ones, the MS four is supposedly gonna be rewritten, there was a draft that I think came out back in two thousand and eleven or two thousand and twelve, it was supposed to be written two thousand and thirteen, we keep hearing it's gonna come out, it's gonna come out, it hasn't officially come out yet, I think there's a draft in New Hampshire for now, but, um, it's supposed to be similar to those things, but no one really has a handle on it.
Is there a cutout, is there a cutoff date?
Is there, no, no, but the situation that I think Anthony was seeing was that if someone is polluting, we're responsible as the owner of the storm sewer system.
Until we get this bylaw.
Right, he wanna be able to put some enforcement on somebody else.
Does it know that, like, stuff like you were saying about the EPA, how they enforce it, there's a lot of times that they come over and they say, you have to have it done by such and such a time, so I'm, and if you don't, then you can be penalized for it, so that's why I'm asking you, now that this is coming up, has EPA mandated a time, timeframe of when the town has to have this done by, or have a bylaw, you can play this fine?
There's a, the town is involved, and I'm not part of it, the town is involved in, uh, it's an, it's like an MS four support group, people in Paxton, all the towns that are subject to the MS four requirements around Worcester, uh, joined together, it's a coalition, and they're the ones that are following it, I think that that's where Anthony, when he was at one of their meetings, got this documentation and this recommendation from them to move it forward, but I think that was.
How long time?
Two years ago. And now, as far as I know, the selectmen are now moving it forward, 'cause they don't wanna get in trouble, and, yeah, they don't wanna be holding the bag.
Ooh. Can we tell them and say that they have to do it faster and, within sixty days and, do that whole thing? That'd be fun.
'Cause I don't know if we know they're talking about this at any of their meetings, so that's why.
Yeah, look hard.
Yeah, yeah.
Not playing nicely.
Oh, move it along, you could discuss this for twenty minutes, and now I'm supposed to move it along? Alright.
Thank you, man.
Alright, CBA can move right on to this one.
This one will be quick.
Give us drafts of what I wrote.
I guess, this is just CBA stuff, we can just skip this. That's odd, this is book that we got.
I'm just, I'm just.
Complaints that came through to the police department on Wayne's, this goes back seven years, so.
It's going.
So I think that would address your question of violations.
Did you get a copy of this?
It's.
This is all.
Oh, you printed it all out?
No, 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 you totally gave me that.
Oh, alright.
I wasn't gonna print that up.
Is this your copy, or is, can I give this to Chris if you might?
You can have it, I just.
They'll probably be better off, too.
This is gonna be quite a thing tomorrow.
Yes, I just told.
Can I bring my dog?
Oh, yeah, this is what you.
This is, you had the three questions?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I was able to.
Shillabites or?
Megabytes, yeah.
Is the request for zoning enforcement, which was a big section of the zone bylaw?
Yes.
If you see Form G.
So.
On the continuation page, that's what the relief they are asking for.
It appears that, so the neighbors had requested enforcement, uh, and they had looked at, I guess they had identified a couple of different sections in the zoning bylaws in the zoning bylaws where they were requesting enforcement. It seemed like one was the outdoor, commercial, recreation activity.
Residential.
Yep. Yeah, a single residence district. And the other was institutional use as a private club, I guess was also mentioned there as well. Right, I think they said that they were a club, so they were trying to go, say, before they get that defense to nip it in the bud, I think. And, yeah, and I didn't find anywhere in the bylaw, other than mentioning sort of the, the phrase "private club" where that term is defined. So I don't know exactly what that means.
Or what the consequences of an act.
Yeah, but whether, you know, private, to be considered a private club, does there need to be some kind of formal charter? Does there need to be some kind of formal-
Like a homeowners association? Has to get it, get together and establish their own?
So if he says a formal club, he is not saying it as a formal club, he is saying-
Right, the neighborhood is saying that.
Neighborhood could say that, but Wayne's side, they will be saying, "This is my backyard. I have a forty acres of property."
We need to worry about the club stuff and that, it's basically-
This is not a approved range, I'm not calling it as a firing range, I'm not calling it as a club. This is my backyard.
It's his backyard, he's shooting in his backyard with friends.
Me, me, my, me and my friends and family are shooting there.
Which I kind of support that whole idea, just, I mean, I like the idea-
So the, the-
Shouldn't really do that. It's when it gets, everyone has a right to a party on their yard.
Yeah, but then who is, if the party, suppose you are having a party at your backyard-
Yep.
If the noise level goes to sky high, or you are having a party every single day, so the neighbors cannot tolerate, who is going to enforce-
Actually, it would be kind of like-
Well, that's a good question, and who enforces it?
Who enforces, not the ZBA, right?
The police go out and enforce it and say-
It's a single-family residence, but not the ZBA is going to put restriction on Wayne's backyard.
But, but it's like somebody going to permit to sell something, a beer, or some food, or something like that, so you're selling food that contributes to the party, I mean, that's sort of what he's doing. You know, he's got a small business that happens very related to what they're doing in the backyard. You know, I mean, that, that's where it would, that's the only where the connection would come, you know?
Well, but I don't think, and I don't think the applicant, or, uh, the proponents, the, what are they called, the appellate, the petitions-
They're not asking for any-
Petitioners don't want to stop the gun sales, they don't want to stop the gun repair, they're not saying anything about his business, that he's got a permit from nineteen ninety-three. Let him keep doing that. We've got some issues with the signs, but that's something that's been around for a little while, it hasn't, we need to work on enforcement.
Is it, uh, the-
Is it the center?
No.
It doesn't look like a single-family residence because of the color of the house? Does it matter?
Well, we don't, we don't have any regulation of it.
No?
No zoning.
So you don't have, huh?
Because of the barn?
No, the building itself, the paint itself looks-
I haven't been up there, I don't-
Are there two buildings?
Yeah, there's that building in the back, you know?
The building is like this color.
Isn't that where the business is?
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have any, uh- We don't have any bylaws that speak to that. Right.
So I can paint my house any color I want?
You can paint it bright orange if you want.
Hoka-Dah.
No, not orange, this is, this is-
We got one bright yellow right next to us, but that's historic, I've heard. That was the original, like, the old way of doing it. I thought it was pretty canary yellow, but-
It's so much canary stuff.
I like it, it's, it's easy to have, a couple of houses past the yellow. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
But honestly, that's sort of also how I view the noise issue, because I don't know that that is a zoning issue either.
It's a nuisance issue or something?
It's more of a police issue, right? It's, it's less of a building inspector issue.
And, and the single-residence zoning bylaw doesn't, doesn't talk about noise?
So I, I did a word search for noise in the bylaw. The only thing that comes up is either in the context of a special permit for, you know, some type of a use, an additional use that you need a special permit for, that's not the situation. Well, they got a special permit for the use to sell on the other lot.
It says noise.
And that permit had a stipulation that it shall not increase the noise, which-
It did in the, in their permit?
I think so. But again, I don't know, I, I view that use of selling and repairing guns as separate from what's causing the problems.
Than what the petitioners are talking about. Petitioners have no trouble with them repairing guns. It's not loud, it's not annoying, it's not anything.
Yeah, I mean, my thing is, I, I do think that it's possible the ZBA, you know, might want to look into the issue of how the ability of people to go to, you know, go to that shooting range and use it, how that might, you know, i- is there sort of a nexus between that and the business? Such that you could characterize the shooting as a commercial activity? While he's not charging people to shoot there, i- is there a close enough relationship to the, the, the business that he does have a special permit for, that that arguably is now outdoor commercial activity? And that's the documentation that they submitted, their attorney submitted a whole bunch of documentation saying that that is exactly what it is, is that he believes it is a commercial use. Yeah, and, and that, I mean, I would think that's something the ZBA would, would want to, you know-
But that's the argument that needs to be presented, is whether, which way it goes.
So, for that, for that, the building inspector said, "No commercial, cease all the, cease and the, this and all the-"
Exactly, yep.
The, that order is exist, and the Wayne's side is not disputing that.
Right.
There is no appeal from the Wayne's side.
What people are saying is this is a commercial use now.
No enforcement.
Right, this, it twists along a whole bunch of different things, and I'm not all that sure of how it all works. That's why my clean clear is, I, I don't know how to make it all kind of come together, which I feel bad for the ZBA in trying to pull this together, but-
I don't even know about sending that letter, I don't know how, we're sort of, we're heading out of-
It's not our-
Giving legal or whatever, not legal advice, but sort of zoning advice to, this is sort of-
I know, and that's why I'm not sure that we even send a letter, but it's something we should, I, we should be discussing it, so I think that's why, you know, we brought it up. But that lot too, so, I mean, I think another thing that I had read somewhere was the difference between primary use and accessory use of a, of a, of a lot in a single residence district, right? And that the primary use of that lot is supposed to be for residential use, not for, you know, not for, you know, certainly not for commercial outdoor use. And so that's, the question is, are, are we, is he sort of tipping the balance now towards that's no longer, shooting is no longer an accessory use, but is now becoming like a primary use of that particular lot?
Does anybody live on the property?
No.
No one, is that a house sign?
No, no, not that problem, not, not-
So that is, that then is the primary use, it seems, so, I don't know if that's-
What was your comment before I heard what you did?
The thing is, is that from what I read, is, i- it's not so much that, you know, that they're using it, it's just that the weapons they feel that are being used, you know, the noise from the weapons. In other words, they're not just use, they're not, from what I-
When I shoot into one too.
They're not just shooting, you know, pistols and stuff, they're shooting semi-automatic weapons.
Machine guns and-
Right, and that's, that's a high noise level. And there's been, there's been testimony, you know, from one resident that said that him and a friend were walking through the reservation, their, his property, but not Arne's property, and almost got shot. Bullets came flying by them. So, you know, they had to crawl out of there.
Were they ghostmating?
No, they weren't, the land that's next to it, which I guess is like conservation land, or whatever it is.
Railroad, railroad.
Railroad.
Railroad trail, yes.
And that they had to crawl out because, and the guy who was there with his friend, his friend said, "This, this feels like a war zone," you know? So I think, I don't think, because when he issued his gun repair, you know, and to sell weapons, I think he was only issuing to sell like, you know, the normal weapons, like pistols, you know? And now these people are up there, supposedly-
But you know, my premise, I'm sure it says, "You're allowed to shoot large caliber, anything across the rail trail."
And I think that that's, and I think that that's, that's the big, that's the big issue there.
Right, I think that's, there is a huge issue with that, just a safety issue, but I think-
They don't even talk about that.
Well, but it's not, that's not a ZBA issue.
Yeah.
That's, and that's where I was, I kept getting confused.
Except that you said, um, all appeals are a ZBA issue, because that's the board that hears them.
Right.
But then, so that presents a problem, because they could appeal a, a, a law enforcement decision or something.
No, no, it's not a board, that's, if they want to appeal an action-
Oh, it's only a boards?
Right.
Okay. Well, that's good, that's better.
Yeah, so when, yeah, they don't get appeals from the traffic ticket, it doesn't, or disturbing the peace, whatever it might be.
So I guess that, that's the only reason they want it to be a zoning, because the only thing that has boards associated with it is zoning issues, right?
I have another, a very different question. So instead of a board or anything, can they go on a public, can they put it on warrant? Town election?
Can who, do, uh?
Do, like a motion to have this-
Who can do the warrant? Town, as a city-
You mean a new bylaw to outlaw?
No.
They could write an, they could request to have a, a new bylaw written. It could be a, a general, another general bylaw, so it's a this-
Yeah, if it, if it is a bylaw written, that shouldn't be targeting that, right?
But I don't know- Well, no, it'd be a bylaw, anywhere in town, they, they could do a noise, no noise greater than certain numbers and come up with some wording, to have a bylaw that's voted by the town people. That's why, once, it can be a little more restrictive. Once it's a bylaw in the town, voted at a town meeting, then that's, the authority of town meeting vote.
So they could do it.
They can try, I don't know that it would pass, but they could try to draft something.
Now they can get a ticket.
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm thinking, if it turns out that this use is deemed legal, you can change your general bylaws moving forward to say, "All right, we're not going to allow this in this town," but if it was deemed legal, then it's grandfathered in this particular place.
If it's grandfathered.
Right.
But I mean, like, you can't, how do you, how do you establish grandfathering if it's just what they used to do? You know, I mean, like, it's like the stormwater of the-
If it was previously not, you know, a violation-
If it was really not addressed, which is like what we're doing here with the illicit discharge bylaw, somebody could be doing it right now and they're not in trouble the way they're going to be in trouble once the bylaw's in place.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it, it's allowing enforcement. So I mean, like, if something goes in place and they didn't have a permit that says something to the effect of you could do this-
Yes.
Then it changes the rules that they're playing by.
That's a general bylaw issue, the one that we're talking about, I think, is a zoning issue. I don't know that-
For sound.
The sound and noise bylaw would not be a zoning issue. That would be general. It'd be another general bylaw.
Which is like that.
Yes.
So, but this town, do they, do you think they will bring in, bring up a noise bylaw?
I don't know, but I'm not-
We don't have one, right?
We don't have one, no? And, I mean, that way to address some of the jake break things, the other things that people have raised as concern.
The reason why we don't have a noise bylaw, because of the farming community?
No, no, that has nothing to do with it, what's a farm got to do with it?
I just think we haven't got to.
It's, we're rights, we're rights at farm.
You have all sorts of animals, so they make it, the goat is there.
Roosters or something?
Goat, goat.
A goat?
Uh-huh.
Makes a lot of noise?
Yeah, does that, mice feed, there's a goat.
A goat?
Uh-huh.
I think the roosters are, are coming to be here.
I've heard a couple of rooster things, I've heard-
You cannot, you cannot have a rooster.
Why?
Nice.
What noise, what noise rule?
That's what I heard.
I know they don't like them because they're noisy, but I don't know where there's a-
Yeah, I mean, if there's a rule that says that, you may apply that rule, if it's not specific to roosters.
Yeah, that's what I heard, the rooster, you know, you cannot keep rooster.
I don't know. I know that they get upset, I know the Board of Health has done a whole bunch of locations of rooster noise, I've seen in their minutes, that a rooster here was just, was removed and relocated, no, I think moved into somebody's basement or something like that, but, but they stopped the noise.
Okay, it says here that the last time I was walking River Road, a bullet whizzed in front of my face, and my friend and I dropped the gun and crawled back from where we came, a barrage of bullets from some sort of automatic machine gun. My friend was not from this area, said he thought it was a war zone, and said, "Wow, power trigger PTSD." So he was, he, this guy, or this individual walks the rail trail and River Road and has all his life, okay? And now it's become dangerous because of this. I don't think that these, and he's bought, he's bought guns, handguns from Wayne before. I don't think it's, that the people are complaining about the fact, about, you know, they're saying it's noise, but it's not because it's noise from handgun, it's noise that's from, um, from machine guns and exploding targets.
Right.
Yeah.
So that, that's the issue, in my opinion, that's the issue.
I agree, so, before we, I mean, we can talk all sorts of things and be here till ten o'clock.
You can do that to the ZBA.
Right, so I think what's before this-
You think we'll be on my turn?
I hope so.
Okay, good.
Well, I think before the ZBA, it's an appeal of a decision by the building inspector, and the letter there is, and that's what I tried to pull up in our, in the draft that I was writing.
Did you give us a copy of this?
Now I don't even know if Chris Lund is going to be there, because he was the one that, that issued this. So, I mean, I would think that it would be beneficial for him to be there, you know, to get his side of why he did that. Also, too, Wayne's not going to be there. He's in, he's in Florida until April first.
And that's, I mean, that's, then how are all his friends going there with his permission, if he's not even around?
His lawyer will be there.
Well, no, I was thinking of just shooting, so.
I, I don't know.
To his house?
Also, too, there's a, there's a, going to be a, a gun demonstration or a gun training in May, in June, April, May, and June.
I thought that was, I thought that was canceled because, well, I get, to go back to the ZBA stuff, I mean, it's, a lot of the stuff, there's a lot of things, but the appeal that the petitioners wrote, I think, is appealing the January thirtieth decision from, uh-
Chris Lund.
Chris Lund, that says they haven't, um, he's not taking any action to do anything more.
To stop any, to stop any activity resembling court and outdoor commercial activity.
Hold on, that's, that's their petition, but their-
Decision.
The decision is, is that he doesn't feel that he needs to do anything more, because on July thirty-first, he has already issued an order that says, "An outdoor, commercial recreational use in a single-family district is in violation of the town's zoning bylaws." So he says there should be no-
No more.
-outdoor commercial recreational use in this district.
So is he citing the bylaw?
Yes, the bylaw three point two C four.
Three two C four, yeah. So it sounds like the only thing that the ZBA should be hearing is the attorney differentiating himself and saying it's not a commercial use, like, that's a bad call because it's not a commercial use.
Three point two, I'm sorry.
Isn't that what he calls it, commercial?
Three point two C four. Well, yeah, yeah, so that's why I mentioned that at the top. Outdoor, commercial, recreational use. Right.
So it would be distinct, distinction-
And they also raised the three point two DA, the, the club one, so they're also arguing. Three point two, C as in cat?
Yeah.
Four.
Okay, you got that one.
And the other one's DA. So in July, the building inspector issued a cease and, a cease and desist, or whatever it is, a, an order saying you can't have any activity there that would be considered commercial use in a residential district.
Right, so I'm trying to simplify the, the sort of, what's in front of the scope that's in front of the board.
Right, and the ZBA is being questioned to, the question is, because they're appealing his January letter that says, "I don't believe I need to do anything more than having already told them, don't do anything."
In violation of zoning.
Right.
Go, don't, just up to it.
Right.
So the only thing that's really in front of the board for them to decide on or hear is how that's incorrect.
It's an, well, it's an appeal of that decision.
Right.
The board then can decide that, one, that he's correct, the, the building inspector's decision stands, and they don't believe there's enough evidence to do additional enforcement. Two, his-
What do you mean, to do additional enforcement?
Investigation or evaluation of the conditions at the site. The ZBA would then go back to the bill, the building inspector.
And just say that, "Okay, your decision stands, they can't do this anymore."
It, the old one stands, and there, there's no need to do any more investigation.
Not only that, the petition Form G continuation-
Yeah, oh, he can petition on the-
So specifically, the petitioner requests that the following, requests that the ZBA impose the following restriction on Mr. Armstrong's use of the fire, fire, gunfire range at two forty-one Laurel Street. Number one, the use of the gunfire range must be returned to quiet, unobstructive and unres, unrespectable, respectable use that existed period to nineteen ninety-three. The following weapons are prohibited.
And what, what is this, this is a-
Here.
That's the petition they are asking.
This is their petition.
So they don't want to use-
That's what they want.
Which, oh, okay.
It sounds, it's the petition's, my question, and I don't, and that's where-
This is separate from the, from the building inspector's decision?
No, they ask the ZBA to put more restrictions.
Decision. And they want, they want the ZBA to, to enact additional restrictions.
The petitioner that appealed the decision?
They're appealing, the petitioner appealed the decision of the building inspector to the ZBA and asked the ZBA to add additional conditions on this.
Okay, so the petitioner is not Wayne's?
Correct.
Okay.
Petitioner is the neighbors, the concerned citizens.
Wayne's is not coming forward and saying, "We don't believe this is true, we want to change this decision, we want to do different things."
Right, he's just-
The neighbors are coming forward and saying, "We want you to enforce this or do something." something."
Right.
Why are they appealing?
Well, because they don't believe, he said that the, the July 31st letter from, or order from the building inspector says no commercial use. From my skimming of the documents, I didn't get all the details, but there was a flare up Christmas Eve, I guess it was a warm day, so for nine hours of the day on Christmas Eve day up until seven o'clock at night or so, until after dark hours-
They were doing that.
There was shooting going on at Wayne's, and they believe that was a commercial, or would be not considered residential use. So they went to the building inspector and asked him for further enforcement and investigation of it. That is what made the building inspector say, "Well, I told them they can't do this already, I don't need to do another cease and desist order or any other orders, the order's already in place." So the petitioners, and this is legal stuff, so I don't-
Yeah.
It's kind of my seat of the pants take on it, so I, you guys can dispute it.
No, no, no.
So, but basically, they want the, the ZVA to
Squash.
Kind of override the denial that the building inspector should go out and do an inspection and also should put conditions on the use at that property.
So amend, in some sense, amend the, the-
The old 1993-
No, the building inspector's decision that says, "I, I've already enforced this," or "I've already stated that they shouldn't do this already." What they want is for his thing to say, "They shouldn't do this already, additionally, you shouldn't do this, 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 and this, and this."
And, and I'm not sure how legally the ZVA can do that. The ZVA can put conditions on a special permit, they can put conditions on a variance, they can put a, conditions on all sorts of things. I, and I, it, they may be able to do petition or conditions on an appeal of a decision. That's where town coun, we need town council-
Is town council going to do it?
To do it.
I have no idea.
I hope so, 'cause-
God, I hope so, 'cause it's more a legal thing than anything else.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
So, to be honest with you, I don't really think it should be going to the ZVA.
Well, except that-
This should, this should be between the building inspector, the police department, and town, the town council.
Didn't you say someplace that's written that the ZVA is the appeal hearing board?
Right.
So that's, that's why you're hearing it.
You're getting the appeal, so your appeal is of the inaction
Right.
Of the building inspector. Your decision can be, I think, and that's why you should check with town council. Your action could be remanded back to the building inspector and say, "Yes, investigate it, this new evidence, this package of
Yeah, interesting.
Pounds of paper, investigate that with the police chief and then make a decision."
The lawyer for Wayne has our, has sent, sent us an email requesting police at the meeting.
Well, that's a good idea, that, that's a no-brainer.
Because they're afraid that, you know, they could be-
He's afraid?
They-
I think the citizens were afraid.
These are all people with guns.
But, and it's a good thing, I mean, they, they should have multiple police at this because I think it's gonna be busy, but, but I don't, I don't know.
It's not gonna get resolved in one night, I can tell you that right now.
I, I think tomorrow, you guys have to come, come forward and say, "We don't know, we'll hear this appeal, but we don't really know where to go with the decision." You have to come up with a, you know, the, the, the le, like, what we do is we push it back onto the person who's coming to us and say, "Have your legal people come forward with a legitimate, legal, whatever, the procedural prop, procedurally proper"
Well, you should get that from, from both sides, both attorneys seem to be there.
Yeah, push it back to them.
His mouthpiece is gonna be there, you know, and that really-
And if all he's doing is talking, you just stop, Christina will stop him.
Right.
But you should say that, we're here, we're, our board is not really, doesn't have a skin in the game here, except that we're the board that has to hear your appeal. So you have to come to us with a valid legal appeal, not just a, a bunch of complaints.
And it's po, it is possible, and I don't know, Christina might have already talked with town council, and they may already know that this is the process to follow, but I don't think she can disclose all that under the open meeting law, so she may be all ready and all set, so hopefully that's the way-
Town council may be coming tomorrow, too.
I, yeah, I would hope so, because there's definitely gonna be one, one or two questions that are gonna be legal, so.
Right, and you don't wanna have, I mean, you can ask their attorneys.
And because, yeah, I'm not sure whether, I know in our bylaws, our requirements, we have that professional review fee, so that we, if we wanna have a lawyer, like when we have Wayne here as an engineer, we could have a lawyer in here when it comes to legal documentation and that kind of stuff, that's paid for by the petitioners. So it could be-
We don't have the provision, no, we don't have in ZVA.
Oh, there's, oh, okay, so I was thinking the ZVA may wanna work on that in the future, so that the petitioners would then have to pay the cost.
No, we don't have the provision in ZVA.
And that's just the policy that the ZVA, like you did with-
I did check on that, I did check on that.
Okay, good.
I mean, it's a policy, you can, you can enact, oh, right before this meeting, you know?
Oh, you have to have a hearing.
That'll go over real well.
Do that. With them in the, in the room.
It's tomorrow, it's not, yeah.
No, I mean, just in the, in, with them in the room, you just, we're changing our policy, I mean, I think other boards have-
No, you can't.
We've done that report town meeting once.
I-
Somebody did it.
I, I don't know, I don't think so, it sounds-
It's shady.
Yeah.
Is that the word, shady?
Yes, speaking to the microphone, yeah.
Shady.
But I don't know, I don't remember, but yeah, I, um, like I said, I'm not sure that, we don't need to put an email out there or a letter across them, I'd like to support, give them some feedback if we really have knowledge to be able to give them something.
I think the first part of the email would be nice to send them, which is just that, this is why you're hearing the whole thing.
Mark will be in, he'll be upset.
She doesn't listen to me.
She does, she thinks you're a fine young man.
Right, and I'm not, I'm old.
Oh, she will, she'll take into consideration, because she's the chair of planning board, and we want input from-
Well, I mean, I support them as a board and that they have to really, but when all the guns come out, I'm leaving. So, and the rest of it.
So, uh-
Right, okay.
So this, the letter, we can, we, we can look at it and maybe, um, what part, what parts can we?
I mean, the first part, I think, is appropriate.
It's in your packet, you can look at yours, you don't have to have one here.
Oh, that big packet?
No, it was, like- It went down, two-thirds of the way down. It starts off with the Chris Olson, ZVA Wayne's draft.
Oh. I thought that was just a Chris one.
No, Melanie packaged it all right up there for us.
But she didn't deliver it?
What, what? Did what deliver it?
Can we have an appeal?
We take that up with-
Yeah.
At the meeting in West Boston Planning Board, okay, discussed. Section 6.2. D of the zoning bylaws only states the ZVA is the entity that hears and decides on appeals. And I think it's pretty clear there, the rest of it, no other standard of review, of review or guidance is provided, which is not what they wanna hear, but it's the truth as to why people are in there, you know, meeting.
Yep.
You know?
And so then, that's, so it's-
And she may even know that, but, I mean-
Right, and she, she knows most everything we already tell her, so that's, it's just supporting it.
Well, I think what we do is we give, it seems in her meetings, we give her backup, like the section 6.2 of this, or the planning board has discussed this also, I mean, there's a lot of things that she appreciates for that.
Absolutely. Cooperation's a nice thing to do, and so we should be doing-
Safety in numbers, kinda.
Maybe that's it, too. I mean, I think, I mean, we have, she's got a, oh, at least one lawyer on board and maybe town council giving input, so-
You mind just move us off, please, please?
Yeah, but, I mean-
The two Johns?
He could still be giving input, so that's, I mean, hopefully that's what you do.
Yeah, oh, exactly.
And so the next, the next paragraph, the idea that, that Chris Lund's response is what is being appealed. The next part is where, it's where the asterisks start, where that's what I mean, I'm not exactly sure.
Right, and I, I don't know-
I don't need, I mean, we don't have to explain to them the problem is the noise, and it's, but it could be that it's a nuisance issue that should go, should be considered by the board of health.
Well, they might wanna hear, they might like to hear that just because then it gets them out of there.
Right, but they still have to act in, um, on their stuff.
Vinny?
Yeah?
That property that this shooting range is on, is that anywhere near the wetlands or anything to do with the contamination?
No, it's a big sand pit, if I remember right.
How about the lead?
It's a big sand pit, it has to be, the jurisdiction of Concom is within 200 feet of a stream.
Well, they're rewriting that now.
So, but-
Hand sand pits.
Hold on, hold on.
Town police also, they use that someplace as a firing range, right?
The town police use the, the land fiddle area, yeah, the brush town area, at least that's what I've heard, yeah.
So not in here, in this area?
Not this area, correct.
Is it nearby?
Yes, like two lots over, but it's, I mean, it's a big-
Same sound problems?
It's a big sand pit, no, pistols from the police officers-
Do you think that-
And that's what they use, when they, when they experiment with?
Yeah, well, I'm sure they may use rifles, but they're, it's not automatic, right? It's not a machine gun, I mean, there was something I noticed in the, skimming through it, that they, they said, yeah, "I've got a, an old 1940-something or 50-something machine gun that we use out there."
So, don't you think it's adding up the noise volume?
Well, yeah, that's what I was just saying.
Yes, but it's, and that's still one of those things that somewhere, someone's gonna have to decide whether it's excessive. If you know, I mean, I'm, I've gone out into my family's backyard and shot for a couple hours at a time, but I don't spend six hours out there shooting, I've gone out with five or six-
If you had a store where you could buy ammo right around the corner, maybe you would.
Oh, no, the people I was out with, we didn't have to have a problem with getting ammo, we, I mean, we would go out and you'd have all sorts of different guns that were, like, reasonable weapons, guns that you could carry, and we would shoot. And it was fun, we had a good time, we all got along.
That's in the Newton Street?
No, 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 no.
It was in his backyard, right?
So I said my family property, so we were further away, but it, it wasn't every day, it was every once in a great while. The problem here is the frequency and the intensity. I don't think the petitioners have any intention of not letting Wayne or his family
Do what they wanna do.
Go out there and shoot, but if you're shooting whatever it is, your, your bump stock rifle, for four hours, your shoulder's gonna fall off. I mean, it's, the, it's a reasonable expectation in a single-residence district, it's the accessory use type of thing. It's good neighbors, I mean, if my neighbor said, "Oh, I'm gonna be having a party, my, my daughter's getting married on Sunday or Saturday afternoon, can you not shoot the shotguns off in the backyard, it kinda scares the best man?" And then you get along and you kinda say, "All right, we, we agree." I think we've gone beyond the letting them talk and come to a reasonable conclusion, so now it's a dispute.
But I don't know what the, how we should end sort of our discussion and get to a letter.
Right.
I don't know what we should put in the letter, except that, I mean, it's all hearsay, you're not hearsay, opinion, which I don't think is what you need. Well, the beginning is okay.
Right, so, and that's where we may wanna go down to, um, the idea that a written consensus is what he was kinda basing his thing on in his denial, the bottom paragraph.
Yeah, the comment.
The comment in the building inspector's decision regarding the need for a written consensus by the citizens of West Boston, um, I don't know why he needs a written consensus. If one person requests him to do an enforcement action, he's supposed to go out, if you write, if you write it down, one person can request it. I think this is because the group, as a group, had one person go in there and say, "We just wanted to calm down and go easy." Another person went in, "Well, we wanted to calm down, but not shoot after 6:00 PM." And another couple of the group, all saying they're part of the group, went in and said, "We want him shut, we wanna shut him down totally."
Oh, so that's why he's asking for a consensus, so that they get together on what they're asking?
So I think he has reason for saying that, but it's not in the document and in the history, but I think that's what's going on, but with the appeal that the ZVA has to hear, anyone can ask for enforcement action, any one person.
Right.
So that's what he, that's what they're asking them, uh, them to, the appeal, for them to decide that he should do enforcement action, I think. So, again, I'm not sure, it seems like there's a-
I mean, that's, I mean, that, if any one person can request something, then three people can request three different things, so he should do all three, you know?
He can, yes, and then, but he makes a decision and documents it, is what it is, not, not doing anything because-
Because three people asked for slightly different things.
Well, they were pretty different things, but if I, this was you-
Were the same property.
Right, right. So, I mean, to support Chris, I think he's doing a good job in trying to, to balance a whole lot of different personalities and priorities that he's been given. So he wanted to have a clear direction as to when he goes out there, "This is what I'm gonna look for." I don't think he got that, and so he wrote that letter, and-
Who's that I go to?
It's-
To the people who requested enforcement.
Judge-
Is it the whole group?
George Balata and the concerned citizens of West Boston.
Okay.
So I think what the ZVA can do, or consider doing, is, I mean, you just, I mean, everything's gotta go through town council, that's really what they need to do, is, there's a whole lot of different issues here, and it all kinda revolves around town council, and it's not something that I or unless someone else wants to jump up and stand by it.
I agree.
But it's a, it's a leap of determination of the appeal and what you can do, and can you actually, uh, maybe that's what we say, is, is it legal to, to have the ZVA make additional conditions on a property that has no, it has no special permit issued, no variance issued from the ZVA, they currently, they have no enforcement authority on it.
Unless they, maybe they tell them that the, what you should do at this point, heading out, is get somebody who's, who's gonna write the document controlling this, and maybe the, the procedure there is to get a variance or something, and try to get that, so that there's sort of a, a, a controlling document, establish a controlling document, and maybe that control, the appropriate controlling document is a variance.
Who will be getting the variance?
Well, but that, and that's-
Who's going to ask the variance?
But Wayne would have to ask-
Wayne would have to do that part.
Why, why he should be doing it?
Right, why would he?
Why?
Well, he, he would at the advice of the building inspector, that's the only reason, you know?
He, no, he's gonna say, "Oh, I don't need that, I've got my right to go out and shoot on my property."
Oh, okay.
And then it's gonna go, it's gonna be a, it's a legal thing, it's not, that's why I think-
It's all a legal thing.
That's why I think it's gonna go to court either way, but I just, that's, our point is, our intent is to support the ZVA, and I think the best support we can give them is that this is the background of the regulations as far as we see it on zoning and mass general laws.
Which is the first three paragraphs.
Right, and then the second part is that-
Well, and I think we should add a paragraph in between there that says, "It seems that this is all fairly complex legal, whatever, fairly complex legal issue, and we don't know exactly how this should be, you know, or exactly how the procedure should go, we don't know if somebody, if, if, we don't know if ZVA can do anything to change the building inspector's decision. We don't know if they should, we don't know if they can, help the ZVA, help the building inspector to, I don't know, reconsider, you know, the, the appropriate, I don't know what they're called, decisions that the ZVA can make, I don't know where their jurisdiction, I don't know, where their power ends, you know?
Does it make any difference that Mr. Lund is not here anymore?
Nope.
No.
Because, I mean, the new, the new building inspector's only been here not even a month.
It's the office, it's not the person.
It's the office, and it's the zoning laws that he's trying to enforce.
If he has any doubt, you will call him up and get the, what the story. So, again, you know, it's a building inspector.
He might have new ideas, I mean, I-
Well, it's amazing, because, I mean, you know, one person can write something up, it's their opinion, and then if he no longer here-
It's the opinion of the building department
Right.
For the town of West Boston.
No, the building inspector, who's the zoning enforcement officer, but what I'm saying, though, is if the zoning enforcement officer changes, right, then that opinion, that opinion could also change, too, when the new building, the new enforcement officer comes in, he could, he or she could turn around and say, "Well, you know, I don't agree with that."
You could.
It's possible, but still, the record before you, you have, you have on record what the zoning enforcement officer has said
Right.
In response to a request for an enforcement action.
So that's a legal binding.
And that's, that's there, that's never gonna change.
And there should be some basis, that's not just a, a opinion.
Unless, unless the new building inspector issues another, like, different kind of an order, right?
So would it be, would it behoove the, the ZVA to ask the new building inspector, who's now the enforcement officer, to go out and inspect the property and see if what-
That's the que, I, I think that gets to Vinny's point, I mean, we don't know that the ZVA has the authority to do that, that's the question.
Yeah, we don't know any of the ZVA's authority in the matter, except to hear the appeal.
Well, we don't issue variances.
But there's no variance?
They're not asking for it. Yeah, all right, so, uh, what I was thinking about, this middle paragraph is that, since we start off with it, the zoning and the state law really is not clear, they're requesting an appeal from the building inspector, um, decision that they should require, they should request an opinion from town council for two items. One, um, does the ZVA, I'm kinda doing it as I go, does the ZVA have authority to place conditions on property where no pass permits have been issued? Is that, so that currently this property has no, there's no waiver or no special permit, that they can just add more conditions on. And the other is, the opinion for, what is, um, what is the zoning board of appeals procedure and authority under the administrative appeals, um, process?
Would that one be more like, what is the, can they clarify, this section 6.2. D zoning bylaws states the ZVA has to, to hear this, could you clarify what their liability is?
Well, that's all there is, is that-
Well, but I would imagine the town council would look probably to his, you know, other decisions.
Right, well, that's, yeah, and that's what I'm saying, is what is the, and how would you wanna phrase it? What is the procedure
Oh, what is the...
On your administrative appeals?
When you look at previous cases or interpretations that have been established by previous cases? What is that called?
Case law, I mean?
Precedents?
Precedents. I would, it would be more like precedents. What precedents have been set by other ZBAs confronted by similar...
Well, other ZBAs wouldn't be binding on this ZBA. What would be binding is court decisions on this ZBA.
Well, but court decisions on what, in similar events, like with sort of ambiguous non-permits?
Right.
You know, and ambiguous non-permits that are trying to be enforced by a building inspector who says, "Stop doing it."
Right.
You know, and they don't do it.
But again, that too, it would depend if those decisions were applying a particular local bylaw or state law. State law would impact us, so another town's bylaw wouldn't necessarily.
State laws would go someplace else, right?
What do you mean?
Like, a state law wouldn't enact the ZBA to hear appeal, or the ZBA to hear appeals, would it?
Well, it depends if it's interpreting section eight and fifteen of chapter forty-eight or not.
Okay.
Is that, is that mass general laws? Is there someplace in there that talks about administrative appeals?
Section eight and section fifteen.
What is it?
Chapter forty-eight. It's in Vinnie, it's in...
I don't think I remember any statement.
Section forty-eight.
Section, chapter forty-eight.
I'm sorry, chapter forty-eight.
Section eight and section fifteen.
And one, and it basically doesn't give you a law.
It just says that, that the, the ZBA hears it.
It says that, it has some conditions, as Vinnie alluded to.
And they hear and decide on appeals.
It doesn't say...
So it doesn't, it doesn't give a guideline, it doesn't say what exactly the ZBA would do, when they, when it's... See, and that's...
No, that's what, that's what the precedents would determine.
Exactly.
I would, that's why I would have town council look for, I don't know how they'd find them, but precedents of other ZBAs, you know, elsewhere who have had to deal with applying this, this part of the law, you know?
Yeah, a municipal lawyer should have some basic understanding in this area.
And some exam, not exam, but precedents.
For procedure?
Yeah, and also, you know, every town is different.
Because, you were saying...
Every town has a different bylaw, laws bylaw, nuisance bylaw.
Oh, that's true.
The language in the bylaw is changing, so how that will affect their district. Say, Suesbury ZBA addition, or Naperville ZBA addition, similar case.
They'd have to use the precedents intelligently and say, okay, so these, the ZBA was able to change this completely, was able to order the building inspector, was not able to order the building. We'd sort of see where they can do it and have it apply.
I agree.
I think that's what they would use it for, not for the actual decision.
There was a similar case in Naperville.
And what was the ZBA able to do, where?
ZBA able to do, as well as what the town able to do. It was on the town warrant.
Oh. So that's what, that's how, okay. You could say that, I mean...
What?
It sounds like, was it North Park?
Naperville.
The ZBA didn't end up doing anything, they, some group got it onto the warrant, so they voted on it?
I mean, and that's...
It wasn't one of the cases, not the little case.
It's possible, yeah, makes sense.
Somebody was talking about, could the ZBA apply conditions to a property without, that doesn't have a permit applied for? I don't think that they, I don't think you can. Because then the ZBA, like, you could go to the building inspector, ask for something, or whatever, somehow get in front of the ZBA, and the ZBA could apply, I don't think it's legally possible that the ZBA would apply rules to your property that are different than the other rules that other people have to work by.
That's a good question, that's why, that was the one that I was giving to town council. That's in the next letter, is it? Put something, so request an opinion for town council, an opinion from town council for one...
The two things.
What is the, what are the precedents set for procedures when applying the administrative appeal? And define the actions available to the ZBA?
Yeah.
Is it something like that? I don't...
Actions, is that what it would be called?
Define the, you know, the available actions for, for it that the ZBA can take.
So we got, we got parts on you again?
It's pretty other.
No, it's, it's helpful. It's find the precedence.
It's something about what, this is going to town council, the first one being, what what are the precedents or procedures that have been set when applying the administrative appeal?
When the ZBA applies, or when the ZBA hears administrative appeals?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Yeah?
The ZBA
Yeah, it's...
Administers...
I think procedure's a good word, process, you know?
Yeah. And to define the actions available to the ZBA, so...
Yeah.
I mean, normally, you know, you can approve it, you can deny it, you can approve it with conditions, in some cases, you can't, in others. So, what can the ZBA do with this appeal?
There's no permit established, there's nothing they can take away as far as, you know?
Right, they're not gonna repeal a permit, they're not...
Well, it, it kinda doesn't, the people have applied for something that has nothing to do with the permit. You know, they're saying, "It's all this noise," but the permit doesn't really, you know, establish that, you know?
I find it difficult to believe that there's nothing in that, other than what you said, forty-eight, chapter eight and chapter fifteen, that doesn't give a guideline to the zoning boards as far as what their responsibility is, or what they can or cannot do if they're, if an administrative appeal comes before them, you know? There's gotta be some kind of guideline, other than just giving...
That's what the courts evolve.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not surprised at all if the law doesn't happen.
Exactly what I said. I looked it up, and I, there is nothing that I saw. I looked through the not DHCD, what's the, community affairs, the, all the zoning, the folks that did the zoning stuff on Saturday. I went through their group of different books of everything. Nothing has anything clear about what to do with a ZBA administrative appeal.
But see, the thing is, is that, you know, everything else, they'll show you a case study.
Yeah, that's exactly what the rest of them would be.
So why is, why is that not, you know, it doesn't have to be exactly what's going on here, but something of a guideline to show the ZBA, you know, what and what they can't do, you know? Okay, like, the signed by law was in Elbony Hill with Arizona, you know, that they appealed, they brought that up at that conference.
I'm sure there have been cases that deal with these kinds of issues.
Sure there have been cases, but in forty-eight, chapter eight, chapter fifteen, they should have something in those in those chapters to say, okay...
Well, I'm not surprised that they didn't put that in the law.
You know, Worcester versus, you know, Chris Olson or something.
Yeah, that's all in the, you know, the...
That's what the attorneys would find.
The case law. You have to do legal research to figure that stuff out. It's just not immediate.
But not you, that's why you should ask the town council.
That's what town's council is for. That's what they're for.
And she, I, I think she talked to town council, I know she's talked to town council, so hopefully she's already got all this stuff done, and we're just keeping Melanie up late tonight, that's all.
I'll say.
Did you move yet?
Been trying to since last week, I don't know, I'm tired.
Me too.
So, what I can do is put that in the middle, and then have the closing. Do we wanna put in the idea for asking for enforcement, the signed by law?
In this?
Yeah, to me, that guy stuck out.
I don't think so.
Not applied, alright. So, thank you.
But this has nothing to do with the home occupation, right?
Right.
Home business.
What was the permit? What was the permit they gave? It was home business, it was a permit, was it?
Home business.
They got, it's a home occupation, that's why it's a stretch to start with, but the, the citizens are not going after that, which a home occupation is something, you look at it, it shouldn't be in a separate building, it's a home occupation.
Yeah.
What it says, it's not a substantial portion of the residential.
Or fifty percent of the...
It's some, yeah, but it's generally, but this was in ninety-three.
So you're in the garage, and then establish that as your own, I'm sorry, that's the thing for two years ago.
Right. Right, so, permit was issued in ninety-three, we can't do anything about it, the citizens don't wanna do anything about it, which is to their
To their credit.
Credit, they're not being picky and wanna just drive them out of town.
But as far as a legal thing, they could say that, it doesn't meet the home occupation stuff, because it's not the... It's the same reason you denied the guy with the garage.
Right, but he's, he's got it for twenty years.
Oh, I know.
So, then, it's not...
But if these people came forward, that's what they should bring up, is all the reasons why you should rescind this permit.
No, but they haven't asked for it.
Yeah, I know.
The thing is, you know, it's not about the...
I'm just saying they didn't want it.
It's not about the home occupation.
Right.
It's not about...
No, I know, but it's, if they wanted to make it something that makes sense to bring an appeal against, they should have made it very legitimately against the permit that's assigned.
Yeah, but that doesn't solve the problem of the backyard.
Yeah, I think that...
Right.
Backyard, that'd be backyard.
And it's fine, and the other thing is, it's the backyard. If they wanted to go, if they wanted to go down into that gravel pit and do whatever they wanna do with thirty people, I don't think the citizens for West Boylston would care. It's the noise associated with what they're doing. If they were down there lighting off firecrackers and doing loud music and whatever it is that they're doing.
Printing money that'll blow across the countryside.
I don't think they'd worry about that, but...
Right.
So, it's the noise and the nuisance.
Right, I mean, it's, it's the actual thing.
And that's when the police go out and enforce, and that's what they should do. So... I will draft this up tonight, I guess, maybe, yeah.
I wonder if there's a different... And maybe the ZBA should come forward and say, "This isn't the appropriate board or something, this is more of a police..."
No, but the, no, the ZBA has the obligation.
For that, for what they're doing.
No, the ZBA has the obligation to listen.
Right.
This is the appeal, they have the obligation to listen.
Right.
So we cannot say, you know, this is not the board. That is the board.
Right.
Well, we're not the whole thing, than the mechanism, or something like that.
So outcome of the discussion may be a different...
Fight gunfights.
It could go anyway, you know?
So maybe it's, it's, the neighbors need to get the message, "Look, this isn't a building inspector issue, this is a police..."
Take it back, not just ZBA, but ZBA should say...
Board of Health, this is, you know, you're barking at the law.
A noise violation, which is a police, they're not a building inspector.
Again, that's where outside counsel would come in very handy.
The town council has to say...
That should be your town council's job, to help.
Right, yeah.
Didn't you guys get another guy?
Huh?
Didn't you guys get another attorney?
We have one for forty-eight.
Oh, for forty, okay, not, not in general.
Carol, 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 you might, you might. I don't know who's coming for, for this. I mean, it would be her.
No. No, but hopefully some, they're gonna send someone, it might be Shereen or one of those that, well, she's, well... But whoever, it's, they're gonna have someone there, I hope. I don't know, but...
But if they don't, on their attorney's degree.
The only thing that I would like to ask the board is, is that when we have things that are coming up, you know, before the ZBA that, you know, like this here, that we need comment, I was wondering if there's any possibility that you could do it like in the last meeting, and not like the meeting before our meeting, so that we could have something, you know?
Depends on when we get these.
Huh?
Depends on when we get them.
Yeah, and...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Right, and yes, the thing is, and we've, we run into this when we get an application, they want, we wanna move it fast, we don't wanna slow things down. And according to our laws, people, other boards have thirty days, or sometimes forty-five days, like the board of health has forty-five days to act on our preliminary subdivision that we just sent out two weeks ago, that we're gonna hear in two weeks. So, they have forty-five days under state law, but we're asking for comments within thirty days, or within twenty-eight days, actually. Because we're trying to be responsive to the applicants, and I think that sometimes
Should we have special meetings? Whenever the ZBA thing, a special meeting, we won't get together?
No, and, you know, I understand what you're saying, Vinnie, but the reason is, is that you're gonna go home tonight, you're gonna stay up till about midnight, one o'clock, in the morning writing this, okay? We're not gonna get this to tomorrow morning, okay? Majority of us on the board work all day, so we're probably not gonna get to see this until just before the meeting.
But I don't think it would matter if you got it tonight, 'cause tonight, you get it, you go find out if legal counsel's going, it doesn't matter.
But this is my point, see, if we could get this stuff to you, like at your last meeting?
Two weeks ago.
And then, we had...
You could've had time to get ten copies.
We have time to go through it, read it, you know, maybe try, and if I had any questions.
It also depends on what they said to Toby too, 'cause she's the one who has to get it out, I mean...
No, I agree, I mean, then...
She gets them.
We, we could get on a different meeting schedule, so that we're Wednesday, Wednesday, or the other Wednesday.
No, it's just, it's the two weeks. We try, we wanna try to do it when we get it.
And I understand that, it just, it makes it, well, it doesn't matter.
No, it is a...
And it makes sense. It's just hard to make it happen, as a whole. I mean, it's a lot of different people involved.
This, this is, this is a very tricky one, very legal, so...
I agree.
All of the issues are okay, we can do it.
But it is, it's not just this one, it's everything that comes to the ZBA, you know, we need, we need input from other boards, and it's nice to have that input at least a couple of days in advance, you're not getting it the day of the meeting. Like I said, most of us work during the day. We don't get to see this until just before the meeting. Doesn't give you time, just like with the signed by law. You know, you're gonna have the information before the public hearing, so that people have a chance to read, you know, and see, you know, and if they have any questions, they can write it down, so when they come, they can, you know?
That's kind of a problem that I've talked about with the open meeting law.
The planning board is doing their level best.
Oh, right, no, but I mean, I mean...
Accommodate the other boards.
And I have no problem with that, that's...
You may wanna think about, no, what we would, what we try to do, or have done in the past, is that we try to get all the information, everything submitted on the Thursday before, so that it can go off to the board members and have them review it in advance.
Drop it off to the board members.
I'm not asking you to drop it off, I'm not asking you to drop it off.
So, but I mean, I think that's something that you may wanna talk about as a board and say, it's nice to be prepared when you come to a meeting, so you, I mean, that's what I do, I I've been doing this thing for years, this kind of stuff for years, and it's still tough for me to try to look at a plan when they come in and say, "Oh yeah, this is that, that, or that, and what do we have to look for?" Luckily, this Cumberland Farms, he'd submitted last week, last Thursday or so.
As soon as he sent it to me, I sent it out.
So we got it out, and so he had, he had images, so we could actually look at it, so it was an easier thing to do. But, some things come in at last minute.
Yeah, I know, that's it, that's the problem, we actually wanna get in here.
Right, and so we try...
And then, like, even, like Wayne, you know, I mean, he's trying, but he's got his own time constraints, he can't jump on everything as soon as we send it to him.
Oh, Wayne, me too, yes.
With BHB, yeah.
Yes, yeah, well, and that's why we put the preliminary subdivision off.
Right, and the Mayan, I don't know, well, I mean, and other things, you know?
Yep, that's right.
I mean, there's, and, I mean, it's the same problem, and, and I just, it's also the open meeting law thing where, like, if you sent it out and there wasn't an open meeting law, we could sort of do this by email a little bit and sort of get more established, but we can't. You know, and I don't like that, but that's part of the rule.
And it's, it's really not great, because, you know, we're all, well, you're like, we're, you know...
Which includes being a volunteer.
You know, we're volunteers, which makes a whole different ballgame, you know?
No, 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 yeah, I mean, when you're, it's a, it is a tough one, I mean, I don't know what else to say.
Alright, so I will draft what I think we're saying tonight.
Yeah, no, I mean, thank you, Vinnie.
And we can move on from there.
You don't want that?
No, good.
Wait, let me put that together.
Are you gonna go tomorrow night? I'm thinking of going, but I'm not sure.
It's my flak jacket has a hole.
Well... I think they submit, well, Christina did a good job getting him to submit a whole bunch of information in advance of the meeting. I'm just hoping that town council has reviewed it and given them good direction, because it's way beyond what I know for legal stuff. I mean, I don't have that experience, so... I think she's doing her best.
Maybe it's not appropriate, this isn't the appropriate way to do that.
I just don't know, you know?
I mean, I don't agree.
I don't know. It may be, it may not be.
That's saying that we do need to...
Should we move on?
Those two liar's argument.
Yeah, nobody's gonna do tomorrow.
Right, right, I mean, that's...
What they have to say.
Yep.
Alright, no reports from other boards, unless somebody had something quick.
Anything quick from other boards?
No.
Nope.
Open Space is gonna have a survey out on town website in early April.
A survey, like a...
Oh, yeah?
A survey for input, questions and answers, yes. How do you like it so far?
On?
Open space and recreation.
What is open space and recreation?
On the park plan.
On the town's website, there's gonna be a survey saying, "What do you think about the current available open spaces?"
Oh, okay, alright.
"Are you pleased with all the different parks facilities that we have? What should we spend a little more on?"
You gotta worry more on?
Only the, the ones we can deliver and serve.
So you're gonna drop it off?
We have derailed.
Alright, for the comments, we don't, no, we don't have any.
It's not, be quiet.
We don't have any.
Minutes?
Anybody wanna talk about SHI? I don't.
Oh, I looked at it. Where did I look at that?
Email, that came through today, didn't it?
Yeah, that was an interesting one, 'cause it came through today, another last minute thing, but I got something from Pat, and I was, I have to email her, and, again, Pat gave me, gave me an email introduction to whoever this
Yep.
consultant was, to go over the SHI areas. I haven't heard a word, I got, not gotten in contact, I haven't heard anything, and then I saw this, and it looks like it's what was submitted, but I never saw what got, it says in the bottom that it was submitted, or it reflects information at the DHCD, it was incident, that was submitted by individual communities.
I think this is what came from DHCD, this is what we
Yes.
Show up as our.
That's what it says, it's from DHCD, but it was based on what individual communities submitted. So what did we submit to them in the last six months, is my question.
Nothing new in the last six months, but it was probably based on the last year's whatever.
But I thought we were preparing something to compile it all and update it, make sure that what we have is real.
But we are requested to this every year. This is probably just based on last year's, because we haven't told them anything new this year.
Well, why not? I thought it was supposed to get done before this came out, so this, because this usually gets updated
Yeah.
March, the end of March. So we were trying.
I think this, for some reason, I think this was sent out to say, is this your current?
Oh, this is the draft of, what do you think?
Or this is what they sent us, this is what you're.
Well, that sounds good, because I thought we were trying to get this stuff done in January, so that we wouldn't get something that's not correct.
No, and I think that's what Paul is in the middle of, is updating them, and this is just what they, this may not even have been sent officially. Paula might've said, what do you have on us? And that's, that's why they sent it.
That's perfect.
I, I think that's more what it is than this is, this is what you established.
And that's, so that sounds good, and what I'd like to see, and I, it doesn't come from DHCD, but if this consultant's working on it, it would be good to get the land areas associated with each, so that we can confirm that we're in compliance with the one and a half percent still.
But the land areas would come from us.
Us, that's, it wouldn't be coming from DHCD. She was, I thought, going through and confirming all that stuff. Because Karen did it back years ago.
I think she's not, the, Paula is not as familiar with the, our software that gives land area, she's not, does not use that yet.
Right, but I don't know that anything's changed, it's.
Yeah, but to confirm it somehow, she'd have to be able to check it somehow, you know. I don't think we've asked her to do any land area stuff.
Okay.
Land area. To confirm.
Because that's the thing, that if someone, if a proponent comes before the ZBA, they can now, I think, say that we meet the standard, we, we don't meet the ten percent, but we meet the other one and a half percent.
There's an issue with the, um, Ali's property permit being on hold, so you can't.
No, it's still included, it's listed here as a zero, so we don't get any SHI units, but the land area is still considered.
I remember Dick talking about that.
Yes.
Alright.
At least that was input I got, and that's, that's being reviewed, the CMR PC said, sent something out that somebody is looking at how they evaluate that one and a half percent calculation.
And there were some different things, Dick was saying that, that you don't even have to have a permit associated with it, or something. Yeah, there, there was something, because of the way the wording was, that's true, yeah.
So I wanted to just make sure that we still have it, so my fear is that this, my fear is that we might get something proposed that's gonna be a forty B, and the ZBA will be able to stand up and say, okay, we want you to work with us, it gives them a little bit more bargaining power to say, we don't need to approve it.
You should go for that and do that.
Well, we say it, but I would like to have the numbers that have been updated since two thousand and eleven, when I did it the first time.
Okay, I, I'll bring it up to Pat, but I, I don't.
Okay.
I don't know if she can do it. I don't know, Paula can do it.
Well, no, I don't need it right away, it's, I mean, no rush for it, but I would, I just wanna make sure that things are happening.
Alright, uh, alright, let's move on from there, meeting minutes, and bills to pay.
So can, can I ask two things? Are we still on the bicycle racks?
Sure.
I mean, it's still.
Bicycle racks.
Yep, you, we were gonna.
Are we dealing with this at the park and racks?
Or do we hand it off to Board of Slap, what do you mean?
No, park and racks.
Yeah, Parks, Park and Recreation is gonna take care of it.
So I did talk to the, uh, Ooster, the bicycle program person. Her name is Danisca, Dan Danisca.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Westpailton, Westpailston has one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents worth of funding in the program.
Okay.
And they do have a place where we can buy the bicycle racks. It's all different on a different size, how many bikes hold it. So they, they have a set price for that. We can go buy it from them. The only thing which is not covered is the installation, and everything is reimbursed, reimbursed.
Equipment's reimbursable, not.
The buy, yeah, the equipment.
Not the labor.
Not the labor.
So we would have to have our.
Yeah, we could always put it on the DPW, right?
Well, we could throw it on the DPW, is it, is it work that the Boy Scouts could do, or the Masons, or one of the organizations in town?
So if you have a thousand three hundred dollars, you know, why don't we use it?
Well, it sounds great.
Yeah.
Do we?
And also one extra bicycle rack from Larry Slate, right?
Yes, there's one sitting around, yes.
Yeah, so we could do like three or four bicycle racks.
Well.
That's good for the town.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a good idea.
And did you guys have ideas where you wanted them?
Well, that's what, that's.
Okay.
Second.
You could ask him, that's a good question.
Ideas where you want them?
Oh, yeah, uh, one in the woodland park.
Okay.
One or two. Do we need one more in the rail track?
Is there, I don't know what's that rail trail?
Rail trail.
Is there one at the rail trail?
That's what the suggestion by the public.
Because I think it might be good, because there's that picnic area.
Yeah.
I mean, they do it, I know they chain off to the.
There is nothing wrong, and instead of one, we can put two too, because during the summer, a lot of kids goes there.
Yeah, I don't know that we need a big long rack, I think if we have one, I think you showed.
I sent you the entire website.
Right.
They have it on the Ooster.
And so, and I'm not sure how much each one are, each one is.
I did send it to you, all those, priceless too.
Right.
We can always.
We need to look at what we can put in.
Yeah.
And just make.
Also, someone said, you know, we could put two, two in each box. Is there any other part we can do? How about the common?
We should have one at the town common, probably, yep.
Cemetery?
So are you writing all these down and having a list, so, what we need to do is, we need to, the next step is, we make a note. We have twelve hundred dollars available, each, we would like to have them here, 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 and here. These are the ones we want, the price for these is.
This much?
Not one thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, we're using up as much money as we can.
Worth to put it near the, nearer, close to the old.
Old stone church?
Such, old stone such.
You can't, that's DCR property.
Oh, so you'll pay for it?
This has to. Yeah, I'll have the shovel. No, it has to be on town property.
And also in a year, that, these two sites are the, the rail track. This one road and this another road, two roads are there, right?
On the rail trail?
Yeah.
There's a rail trail, and then there's River Road?
Yeah, River Road, what all.
Yeah, we could put one over River Road, I don't, I don't, does the town own any, well, we own the road.
Yeah, we still own the road.
Yeah, come up with a list of where and what you wanna put in, and the cost for each, and then that should go to probably the parks, um, Parks Commission.
Yeah, we did send it to parks, but they didn't respond to any of those things. And I did look at the agenda. Yeah, I did look at the agenda, they, there is nothing on that, or regarding the.
Oh.
Bicycle racks.
Okay.
Or I will send it the email again for.
Yeah, Bob Dunn?
Bob Dunn, yeah.
Send it to Bob and to Jane Breen, who's.
And also Mike Kittredge also.
And Mike Kittredge, those are the three that.
All three.
So what you can do is, say you put it, because you put it out on Facebook or somewhere to get ideas of locations.
I already did.
Yep, so you got those locations, give them.
I did that too, I did that.
Sent it to them and said, these are the places, and this is the one we wanna use, we need.
And also I put the people who said this and where they want, also, everything I gave it to them.
And they haven't?
Nope.
Okay.
They're going to the meeting?
No.
Or they might have been busy, you know, maybe the next.
Yeah, they had, they're trying to figure out what fields are going with everybody for all the spring soccer and tennis.
Yeah, they may be busy.
Baseball and Little League, and there's like hundreds of things going on, so.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
Bottom, and also this funding may not be there forever, right?
Right, well, that's things that we wanna move on it if we can.
Next year, you know, it goes.
It comes back, or it go?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's.
So they, now they have the money for this, you know, the state gave the money.
Alright.
So they are trying to distribute. If you don't claim it, it's gone, and we don't know whether next year the state will.
Can you send an email to the planning board and to all those, the other three, Mike, Jen, and Bob? Who's the chair of the Parks Commission?
You are there.
And which is it on, Paula?
No.
No, Pat, he's Parks Facilities.
You are there then? No, but one time you were there.
Football guy, isn't he?
No, that's Parks Facilities, Pat, Indu, it's Parks Facilities.
Is it Mark or something?
Okay, I don't know.
Oh, no.
Went to that meeting.
Pio.
Pietro?
Pietro.
Pietro.
Yeah, I think it's, is it John Pietro, or? So add him to the list. Ask if you can get put on the agenda, and then attend the meeting, and say, this is what I've got.
So this, the select board has to approve it?
The Parks, no, I, well.
Probably not, they just.
Because it's money involved.
I would talk to Parks, Parks Commission, because it's, it's theirs.
Actually, you could put it that way and say, do you wanna be involved in this?
No, no, it's.
But they, they have to do it.
Commission is the one that, it's theirs. If they say no, it's done, it's over.
Well, you couldn't just, you couldn't just do it?
No, it's a Parks thing, it's town parks, they have authority over all the stuff that goes on in the parks.
You could just put them in front of his house?
No, I'm just. Oh, he could do that, yes.
Anyways, alright, so.
And the other one is, are we all set with the complete street policy?
Oh, did you send that out?
April sixth, I think, we are going before the Board of Selectmen, the chair and I. I think that's when it was.
Excellent. April sixth, huh?
I'll just sit back and watch the show.
Excellent, see what happens. April sixth?
Yeah, I think it's a Wednesday, April sixth.
Two weeks. It says right here, I'm rearranging my shop drawer.
Oh, man. I bet that's something you can get accomplished a lot quicker than you say you are.
What?
You can accomplish that a lot quicker than the three hours you.
It says I'm.
Taking credit for, yeah.
It's one different colors.
Just make sure you put them together for a change.
Do you know what time there, is there a seven o'clock meeting?
I don't.
The agenda may not be up.
Say that again?
The agenda won't be up, you know, it will take time.
Yes, well, we can.
I was just going to my calendar, so I'd remember to do it, that's all.
If, uh, you wanna email Nancy? Can you email Nancy Lucia?
Me?
No.
Good, thank God.
So, yeah, I can, I can.
And just say, okay, we were talking about it, we wanna be sure of when, when we're supposed to be.
Why do you want me to run again?
Because I've got a meeting at six o'clock that night, so seven thirty or eight would be fine with me.
So we just need a chat, that's all.
We, well.
Exactly.
Yes, the chair will be there with support possibly.
Yeah.
On that night, right?
Yes.
Is it a different time? Okay, good, yeah.
Pretty, I'm pretty sure it's that night, and Rajesh will confirm with Nancy.
Okay, the, you had one other thing, or just complete streets?
The top.
That was the other.
Alright, you're done with complete streets, alright. Do we, as, as a planning board, remember when we talked about traffic problems? Like not having a good study, whenever, with anybody is doing.
Absolutely, yes, that we were.
So the police department bought these s- speed limit signs that tally, they give out a report of their, how many people go by.
Yep.
Should we ask for them to do our own impromptu traffic studies using those? So they'll be in place for a month or something?
The speed limit signs are not complete, so it says, I can, uh, my speed limit is thirty-five. What is the exact?
Is your.
I'm not so much concerned about the speed limits, I'm concerned, they also count how many cars and stuff like that, I mean, they give you a whole bunch of data. I mean, I wasn't gonna do anything with the speed, rather, it's more gonna do with the traffic counts.
I don't know that counts it.
Yeah, the hard part is, the turning's, usually going straight isn't a problem, it's when people slow down to make a turn and conflicts there.
Well, the thing is, is these, these signs are, we can do whatever we want.
Yeah, no, I think we could do it. I don't know that we have enough traffic experience to know, I think you're gonna say, your next question is, where do we put them and what do we do with them, right? So I don't know what the answer is to that, so that's why last November, I talked with CMR PC to have them do a little investigation of the traffic study.
Yeah.
And they said, we think we have enough of the data for, to do that traffic study already, and they were gonna get back to me, so.
And also in I F.
I gotta talk to CMR PC.
So, I mean, and they don't, they felt they didn't need any more data?
They felt they had enough data to look at, because I, I said Franklin twelve and one four.
The triangle.
The signs, if they collected data, if they wanted data on Tuesdays and Sundays and everything, we just put all those signs up and collect.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I mean, just, just so that we don't keep coming back to, we don't like your traffic study, we don't think you're using valid data.
So, but the, the other thing is also, you know, when we complete the, complete street policy, when it is approved, then we could get money on that little money.
Yes.
I don't know what those signs are, they don't, I mean, there's gotta be some money.
Yeah, well, he's going a step further, doing, we can get money to do a redesign, that kind of thing, as the complete streets.
Redesign of?
No, the survey.
Fixing.
Or the survey.
Oh, survey, okay.
They get, they get, I think, you know, fifty thousand dollar up to fifty thousand dollars, just for the survey.
Okay, so signs are up, okay.
But that's a good thing, um, what do they call, their speed limit signs?
Yeah, speed limit, whatever, measuring signs, because they, you know, they read on your speed. You know, it's not just a speed limit sign, it reads on your speed back to you.
Speeds.
Speed sensor signs or something like that?
Sensor counters.
So it does give you the number of cars close by?
Well, I, I don't know exactly what all the data is, but when the chief was in talking about it, he was saying it gives you a bunch of, it records like a month's worth of data, or whatever, or however long it's up.
So you can. I think he said there was a log, so you know sort of when is the heavy traffic, when do people.
Which would make sense, right, so they could set up a real traffic stop and know when to do it, to get a lot of, you know, get the speed. And I was just thinking, we could take that data, even if we're not gonna do anything with the speed, we could use the counts.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And then we could give this to.
I will, I'll call CMR PC, or do you wanna call CMR PC, I don't.
No, you could call, that's alright, I'll let it call.
So call CMR PC and talk about the traffic study for that area, and offer that we have these sensors that we might be able to put out for.
And see if they're.
You, are, or they'd be useful.
The other thing we could do is, we could have those signs, and we could, when we have somebody come in who has an application,
Yeah, but that's not in a, that's not the survey, right? Transportation survey?
It's not a transportation survey.
It's not a survey.
But it's similar to like when Cumberland Farms came in and said.
We get some information, but it's not like.
We'd have at least some data when they say, this is the data we used, and we can say, that doesn't make any sense compared with what we think we.
Or else they say, we were out this day, and it was a Tuesday, and they're saying that's the peak, when we have data that, Tuesday says 10, and on Saturday at noon time, it says 25, so take your numbers and bump it up.
Okay.
Data's always good.
Just to finish on that data point, I requested, CMRPC requests bicycle and, I think, the walking counts that we had talked about last time.
Pedestrian bike counts.
For the, the center of town, and I had also requested the triangle, you know, Route 12, 140.
Yeah.
So they suggested, it was Nick, I think I talked to, he suggested, since they just did the triangle in, I think, 2014, they said normally they don't come back to the same area for three years.
Oh, really?
Okay. But he said they, they have no data for the center of town, so he put it on his list, and get back to me when the final determination is.
And what they're gonna do?
Yeah.
Yeah, in the past, we put those in, Selectmen have picked some other places, so.
Okay.
Well, not with the pedestrian bike, they do that with the, the counts, the traffic counts.
I'm, a bylaw committee, has ConCon been in touch with you?
Uh, no, the bylaw committee invited me to the meeting sometime April 29th.
But, was it the guy who did it, Dave? No.
Dave McCurie.
McCurie, who's also on the.
Chair of the bylaws.
Chair, but, no, technically, I think Kim's the Chair, but he's, she's.
Oh, okay, I thought he was the Chair, okay.
Um, but yeah, if you could come to, I figured, the 29th or something?
I think that's when it was.
So.
I thought it was last.
Just to help us get this bylaw ironed out.
It's next Tuesday, seven, seven o'clock.
Bylaw committee meeting? Yeah, it's late, 7:00, 7:30, okay.
Do you want that pedestrian bike count, Chris, for, from last year or a couple of years ago? I just saw it on one of my files, I was gonna forward it to you and forgot all about it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Does it have where the bike racks are?
He's working on that one.
All right, we have, uh, does anybody like the minutes?
Yes, I read them, and they, they look great to me.
I only had, I don't know who did those minutes over at the Angel Brook thing, but.
Do we have them?
Oh, yeah, I was talking about the March 9th.
Oh, okay, we'll just do the March.
Do the regular, do the regular meeting minutes.
All right, motion to approve the minutes for March 9th, 2016.
Is it 12th, too, or are you bringing that?
Oh, those were.
Just, just the 9th.
Just 9th, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, March 9th is done. What do you wanna do with the 12th? I have a 12th in my.
12th, unfortunately, I wasn't there.
Well, the comments that we got from Carlton there, saying that we should, we should correct our minutes, because on the first page, under Angel Brook Development, request for certificate of completion.
Yeah.
Second line, uh, homeowners association, residents.
And their landscaper.
It's not their lan, their landscaper, it's Keystone's landscaper, Jeff Taylor.
Or Keystone's representative, I think is the one that we're looking for.
Oh, okay.
He represents Keystone.
'Cause he wanted them to represent, not just be a landscaper.
Not a landscaper.
Representative.
Taylor, Jeff Taylor for the Keystone, representative for Keystone.
Okay.
And, and what else?
I think that I, I'm afraid that they probably had more, but I don't know.
I did, there's an email attached to this. Oh, the State East email.
That was Mike's.
Yeah. Does it say who wrote these?
Which?
The March 12th.
Submitted by, on the very bottom.
Well, good, good, I just want that on there, so you don't get any bad press.
All right, I'll go down.
Yeah, delete it.
I can do that.
Do, do, does anybody care for these, or they, we don't like them, or we wanna change